I haven't heard from us, so it's 6:01. Want to start?
Yeah, we'll roll with it. Identify the motion.
Motion open.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. This is JR Colby, Chairman, Newbury Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Alicia?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy? Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. When I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Tracy Blaze, Town Administrator?
Yes.
Julie O'Brien, Executive Administrator?
Yes.
Martha Taylor, Town Planning Director?
Yes.
And John Lucy, Chief of Police?
Don't see him yet.
Okay.
What about Jim?
The anticipated speakers on the agenda. Bob Connors, Chair, Station Building Project Construction Committee?
Yes.
And Mike Leckman, Chair, Human Resources Board?
Yes.
Please note that the Select Board has two public hearings scheduled for this evening, starting at 7:15 to be held jointly with the Planning Board. Attendance of Planning Board members and anticipated speakers for those hearings will be confirmed at that time. If the Board finishes its regular business as posted on the agenda before 7:15, the Board may recess briefly and reconvene at 7:15 for the hearings. Good evening. Meeting of the Newbury Select Board is being conducted virtually consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, and the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends a requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. The order, which you can find posted on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the actions of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Select Board is convening by Zoom meeting link as posted on the agenda on the town's website. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the website. We recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on the website. When I turn to the first item on the agenda, before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct about to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of board members inviting each to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accuracy. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you. And be sure to state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Chairperson and vice-chairperson will afford the public comment for a period of three minutes and will be granted as follows. Participation will be sought through the raise hand function. For video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. Hover your cursor in this area if you don't see it. A participants window will open and display on the right. On the bottom of this participant area, you will see a list of video participants, and on the bottom, you have the ability to click on a button to raise hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. You may rename by using the more function next to your name. Telephone participants can raise their phones keypad to meeting to raise hand by hitting star nine. Those who have requested to be heard through raising and function will be heard in the order of which they are listed. The system lists the order by whom first hit the raise hand button. Please identify yourself by stating your name and address, and then your question or comment. You will be unmuted and your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. We'll continue down the list of those in the raise hand column. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Oral communications from citizens. Do we have any raised hands?
I see a physically raised hand, James Stewart.
Okay, we'll get, hang on, James, we'll get you unmuted.
I think I might have just.
Yes.
Great. My name is James Jim Stewart. I reside at 22 Old Point Road in Newbury out on Plum Island. Mr. Chairman, Board, and other involved parties. I and other neighbors nearby me here have received a copy of a letter dated December 16, 2020, authored by the town's attorney, Lisa Mead, indicating a request was made for the Select Board to consider an alternative route to the proposed 14th Street emergency route at tonight's meeting. Seeing that this item is not on the agenda and therefore will not be taken up tonight, our concern is that further delays be avoided and that everyone involved can get this item on the next meeting's agenda, which we understand to be January 26. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Do we have any other raised hands?
I do not see any, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Seeing none. We'll move on. Chairman's report. I signed the PR 21-14 for Julie O'Brien. I signed the PR 21-14 for the Select Board. Mr. Connors, are you ready to give your report?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman Colby.
Okay, take it away.
All right, Chairman Colby, members of the Select Board. My name is Bob Connors. I'm the chairman of the Police Station Construction Committee. And we wanted to provide you with a update. And the update is a snapshot of a projected cost as of January 6, 2021. Certainly that we have a meeting coming up tomorrow. So there will be other potential additions or deletions to this report. On behalf of the Police Station Construction Committee, I'm submitting an update regarding the construction schedule and project budget. Covid-19 impacts to the schedule is about 30 days at this time. The original date for substantial completion was December 19, 2020. The current date for substantial completion is January 15, 2021. The project is currently within budget. Please note, schedule and budget is subject to change due to unforeseen circumstances, act of God, or further COVID-19 impacts before completion. Members, what we did is we broke this out in a, the most concise, consolidated way we could to be able to give you a snapshot of current cost and projected cost. So I'm going to go through that change orders. That will be the number one item we'll, I'll discuss. Currently, the committee has received three change orders totaling $69,907.87, and they have been approved. This amount included the transfer of the owner-supplied communication tower at a cost of $53,666.82. That amount was actually and is covered under our FF and E line item. So although it's in addition to the construction side, it's really kind of a housekeeping transfer between one line item on your budget to the other, resulting in a $16,241.05 drawdown against the contingency line item. As you can imagine, there's always potential change orders out there that are under review. At this time, we anticipate an additional cost of about $150,000. So projected change orders to date and anticipated is $175,000 against a $321,000 contingency line item, leaving $146,000 in available funds for any future, if any, additional costs. Credits, a little unusual to receive credits on a construction project. But if you may recall, during the filed subbid process, the elevator quotes came in substantially higher than we anticipated. And the design team recommended that we carry a allowance for the successful general contractor and that it would be rebid at a different elevator. That resulted in a $54,325 credit to the project, starting out. In addition to that, there was an additional credit of $21,400. During the construction process, the contractor identified a duplication within the construction documents and/or filed subbids. The way they were going to would be applying an additional air vapor barrier over an existing sheathing system that substantially, it took care of that issue. It resulted in a credit to the project of $21,400. So to date, we've received credits totaling just under $75,000. Now, if you notice, it says posted. That $74,000 has been incorporated within outstanding change orders that have been approved. We're giving you the net amount. So you could have a change order for $65,000 of work that was added or costs that were incurred, and it would have been a $54,000 deduction. So just it's, it's can be a little bit confusing, but that's just how the process and the paperwork flows. Grants, again, you heard during the process and certainly at town meeting that the police chief, Mike Riley, originally initiated seeking a grant from Seabook Station for our generator. John Lucy successfully secured it, and it's in the amount of $25,000. In addition, Tracy Blaze has secured energy credits from National Grid for electric and gas conservation measures throughout the building. Basically, the energy upgrades that we're incorporating in the new building provided the town the opportunity to secure incentive credits back from National Grid. Now, neither of those have been funded yet. The, the grant will be something that will just be handled through procurement. The incentive payments will be secured after completion and payment of all of the costs associated with that. If you turn to your page two, furniture fixtures, equipment. Chief Lucy, Deputy Chief Fisher, Martha Taylor have been working with procurement to secure furnishings, computers, network, dispatch, telephone, communications, and a security equipment. Deliveries will be starting the end of this week through the end of the month. We anticipate additional FF and E items and costs will be secured post-movement. The 911 cutover father's project is scheduled for February 1. That will be the start of it. So currently, we have projected FF and E cost of $310,000 against a $550,000 line item with $240,000 available funds at this time. The current, the committee projects cost before the actual closeout. This becomes a little bit confusing here, team. The, the cost that we posted, the original cost that were presented to town meeting, we continue to carry those forward and use those as our cost until we can actually close out, do the adjustments, and drawdown on contingent, contingency and FF and E line items, you know, as mentioned above. Ultimately, the town accountant determines final cost after closeout of the project. So just to go through it quickly, the original contract sum, 6.4400,000 and $418,000 in 301. Projected soft cost, 1,7500. FF and E by 50. Project contingency, $321,000. Project cost before closeout adjustments, 8.28296,801. So as you look back on the previous document, the previous page, it gives you a snapshot that where we saw our cost in available funds as of January 6. We, we haven't been able to post those. We're not comfortable yet posting those to the actual cost until we get closer to complete closeout of the project. Project schedule, January 15, substantial completion. Substantial completion should not be confused with completion of the project or final closeout of the project. It means all of the major trades are substantially complete. And then we enter into what we call the punch list phase of the project. During the final tweaks, the architect walks through, the owners, project manager walks through and presents list of adjustments, tweaks, glitches that need to be corrected to the contractor and the subcontractor. So from January 15 to the end of the month, contractor punch list items. January 15 to the end of the month, we will start to supply all the owner-supplied furniture FF and E and start install. February 1 through 3 is the, is the anticipated state 911 cutover date. Basically, that means a high road goes dark from a 911 standpoint, and 7 Morgan Avenue becomes the active 911 and dispatch. February 3 through 9, complete transfer move into 7, 7 Morgan Ave. The chief has a furniture company scheduled to move the remaining furniture. March 15 through April 15, we, we have exterior landscape, top coat of paving, line, lining of your parking lot, and then certain other miscellaneous punch list items will be completed in the month of April. Gives us a chance, one, to look at all the landscaping, make sure that everything survives the winter, and to do a final top coat on the parking lot after construction, so it's, it's brand new. You will see activity probably right through the end of April. It's not uncommon to have miscellaneous adjustments, programming, and other items that a project of this size is done after movement and we close out. But that, that's a snapshot of where we're at. And if you have any questions, glad to try to answer them.
Anyone from the board have questions?
I, I would like to take in comment from someone who has sat at all the construction meetings that, you know, with Bob's 40 years of experience, I mean, we're just, it was a great project to watch. Mike Crestor worked well with us. It was an extraordinary, I mean, to have that many change orders is, is that fewer change orders is unheard of. I can't say enough for the fluidity of the project during COVID and everyone's cooperation, and mainly it's due to Bob just being on top of everything and kind of guiding it on.
And I'll, I second that one. It's been a long process. This project took years to formulate and approve. And of course, it landed smack dab that we're going to finish up the last year of it in COVID with material shortages and supply hiccups and, you know, kind of piggybacking on Jeff, a total testament to your experience and expertise, Bob, and also Eric Swann and John Keller. Super, super job by our committee.
And JR, just throw in too, because Bob mentioned it to me, you know, town hall has been great. Elaine, Tracy, they've worked so well. Eileen.
Right, and also Martha Taylor, our town planner.
Can't forget.
This project.
She's part of the committee, so I didn't mention her, but they all have worked so well.
Chief John Lucy, who took the ropes, you know, when they retired. Has done a very admirable job. I got that's familiar and tech and some other things that I'm not, so, you know, welcome voice of the committee. So thanks for all you folks, too.
Okay, and one, one remaining, one remaining item. We're preparing a list. We, we've gone out and taken the liberty to secure quotes for service contracts. You need them for the elevator. We need them for the generator. But we, the HVAC contractor is located in Newbury Port, Mass. So we're part of our turnover to the town when, when the building is fully occupied is once the one-year warranty expires, the town will be able to decide what service contracts it wants to enter into to have a seamless continuation problem-free building.
Chairman Colby, I just want to say one thing. I had an opportunity over the holiday to go through the police station with Chief Lucy, and it, it is really bravo, job very, very well done. It was a long time coming. It's just, it's, when you think of a police station, you don't even think of one-tenth of what's in there. It's just amazing to me. The, the fiber alone was amazing. Job very, very, very well done. The town of Newbury thanks you.
Well, it is, it's a team effort, and every member of the committee contributes. The time that Martha and Eric have spent sorting out issues, you know, as chair, you're basically a facilitator. And it's been a great team effort. We have a great partnership with the, the build team, the design team. And, and then just the experience of the committee. Chief John Lucy is probably spending 25 hours a week. This is the time when all the technical stuff, getting the right phones line, and you're going to have a special phone line for the elevator, got to have special stuff for 911. That in itself is, is damn near a full-time job, but it's a great team effort. And you know what? We're looking forward to the sign, the new sign should be going in this week. It's all done. Now, I think that will start to be the, one of the finishing touches. One thing, I know that the lights have been a bit of an issue starting up. All of the lights in the building are on a programming system, and they're all dimmable. So we will set up, we haven't got into programming to that yet. But I know Mike was encountering a little unwanted light.
Oh, Bob, there was just two on the side of the building in front.
Yeah, right.
I mean, they lit up my, they lit up my, my house.
Oh, Mike, I saw the pictures you, you sent, and but the point is, we can, we can regulate every one of those. They can be timed, they can be dimmed. All the parking lights are all fully downlighted.
Those are, those are nice. Those are really nice. I mean, there's any of the, the green lights, there's no problem there at all. It's just those, those two white lights.
Yeah, no, and, and, you know, understandable, Mike. And, but we will, we'll be able to work that out, and we thank you for your patience on that.
Thank, well, thank you for shutting them off.
I got that done as quick as I could, Mike.
I know, thank you, John.
That's, and that's good. Over the last couple of years, lighting in different respects has become an issue in town, and we all have to make sure we work together to, you know, that when new lights go up, they're respectful of the neighbors while being functional. And I'm glad you, you guys were able to work together on adjusting that, and hopefully that bodes well for things we do as a community going forward.
Yeah, and I think your planning board, the site plan approval process, it is laser-focused on that, and all of the parking lot lighting, no, it was incorporated, you know, based on the recommendations and requirements around.
I'm looking forward to a socially-distanced, distanced rip and cutting ceremony, hopefully in April.
I'm hoping it doesn't have to be social-distanced.
Yeah.
I doubt that.
I can dream.
So one, one, one closing remark. We will, once the building is complete, we'll be working with Martha and submitting an as-built site plan to get a sign off on site plan approval. And in the same, doing submittals to Conservation to secure our certificate of compliance from the Conservation Commission. But that's all I have, team.
Thank you, and thank, thank the committee, all of, all of you, because job well done.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have some grants, gifts, and donations. Some COA donations, Council on Aging. We have $60 donation to the Council on Aging from Michael and Leslie Doyle. We have a $15 donation from Richard and Cheryl Cox. We have a $25 donation to the CEO from Paul and Ann Colby, and a $200 donation to the Council on Aging from David Loring.
Move to accept?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to say thank you to everyone for making those donations.
I've got, I've got a few more coming in from my, my, my group. It's like, it was for the Zoom standers we did, and we got another $50, and I sent it to Tracy today.
Okay, that's excellent. Good work. And all right, roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby?
Yes.
Well, we have some time to spare. We'll move on to business licenses. We used to take these as a list, but seeing as we're in COVID-19, all the rules and regulations, we're going to do these one at a time, and we have time for it, so we might as well just make sure we do this right. First one's Kim Wilkinson. Adlin Road Conference and Retreat Center, 46 Elm Street.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Motion to move? Yeah.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby?
Yes.
Michael Shelby Hall, American Automotive LLC, 61 Main Street.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby?
Yes.
Vivian Anastasia Hurtin, Anastasia's Flowers on Main, 56 Main Street.
Motion to accept?
Mr. Chair, you, you skipped number two. Just, you can get back to it, but I'd just call it to your attention.
Which one was that, Jerry?
The second one.
I'll switch to the list. I was looking at the Yeah, okay, let's, 61 Main, we'll go back to Brazza Car Sales.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on American Automotive LLC, 61 Main Street? Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I was just, Julie, did you get a, a motion in a second on that? I didn't hear it, that's why. You got it?
Yes, the mic, and then you actually seconded.
Okay.
Better, better safe than sorry. All right. Dirce Machado Marrera, Brazza Car Sales Incorporated, 86 Newbury Turnpike, Used Car Dealer's License, Class 2.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby?
Yes.
Completed Vivian Flowers on Main. Ronald Barrett, DBA Barrett Transportation, 18 Hutchins Road. Vehicle transport.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote. Alicia? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J R Colby?
Yes.
Pamela Doherty, DBA The Beach Dog Daycare, ninety-six Newburyport Turnpike, Animal Care.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And J R Colby?
Yes.
Fit by John, DBA, John A. Demaro, Jr., eighty-nine Hanover Street, Unit Three, General Business and Personal Training.
Motion made?
Second.
Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J R Colby?
Yes.
Wesley D. Matthews, Dragonfly Hill, DBA L B M Collectibles, one-eleven Main Street, Crafts, Gifts, Antiques, Secondhand Articles.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And J R Colby?
Yes.
DBA Mad Martha's Island Cafe, fifty-one Northern Boulevard, common and victualer. Hours of operation Tuesday to Sunday, seven to two, Thursday, Saturday, five to ten.
Motion?
A motion?
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And J R Colby?
Yes.
Randall Bandolam, Trustee, DBA Old Nubry Boat Company, eighty-four Newburyport Turnpike, Auto and Marine.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J R Colby?
Yes.
David Williamson, DBA Plum Island Enterprises, Williamson Parkin Lot, three Northern Boulevard.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And J R Colby?
Yes.
David Williamson, DBA Plum Island Enterprises, Williamson Parkin Lot, thirty-four Plum Island Boulevard, Parkin Lot.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And J R Colby?
Yes.
DBA Plum Island Taxpayers Association, eight Plum Island Boulevard, common, victual or parkin lot.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yeah.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And J R Colby?
Yes.
Siemens, DBA Sculpture by Beverly Siemens, two Newman Road, General.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J R Colby?
Yes.
DBA Seacoast Horse and Pet Sitting, forty-eight Old Raleigh Road, General Business, Animal Care, Dog Boarding, Dog Care and Pet Sitting.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And J R Colby?
Yes.
Elizabeth Molten Cowie, Martha Molten, DBA Surfley and Bait and Tackle LLC, thirty-five Boulevard, General Business Bait Shop.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J R Colby?
Yes.
Charles Pupulis, Triad Traffic Technology Incorporated, DBA Triad Driving Academy, ninety-six Newburyport Turnpike Driving School.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J R Colby? Randall Bandowian, Trustee, Offshore Consteps Conservation Trust, DBA U.S. Number One Auto Marine, eighty-four Newburyport Turnpike, Used Car Dealer's License, Class Two.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And J R Colby?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to let the chair sign the licenses?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And J R Colby?
Yes.
Chief Lucy, are you ready for our Emergency Management Director update?
I am, thank you. Hey, this is, this is based on the latest information from the DPH, the Department of Public Health as of January seventh. We continue to increase the positive cases. We still remain in the red status. There were six hundred and sixty-eight tests administered from, at the last period, of which forty-five were positives. This is a six-point-seven percent increase. It's kind of staying pretty consistent right now since the last report, which is good, it's not getting worse. We've realized a forty-four percent increase in cases on our, on our tracking since December first. So, there's a expected spike with the holidays coming up, the other side of the holidays. This was, this was anticipated. The first responders vaccination project is moving forward and will be executed by the end of this week. Those, that's through the hard work of Chief Janvern and Health Agent Deb Rogers, coordinated with Newburyport and all the other area communities to facilitate the, the vaccination of all the first responders. And so, throughout this week, that process is starting and by the end of the week, we should be all set. And that would be my report.
Okay, thank you, Chief Lucy.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question, Chairman Colby?
Yes, Alicia.
Chief Lucy, is there gonna be a coordinated rollout? Are you aware, I should probably ask this quick, are you aware of any coordinated rollout of the vaccine when it moves to phase two?
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up. I, I missed that on my, on my punch list. Right now, that's obviously in the works and what we're doing, the best, most effective way to get the information out to the public is we have a link to Mass.God's COVID Response right on our website and that's giving the, the updates as they happen. As far as any dates or anything locked down or facilitation of that, I can't speak to that right now, but I'm, I'm expecting to be very, very soon.
Okay, is this something the health department's gonna, gonna take on, have clinics? Or is this something, I mean, what, I don't know, maybe the town administrator can answer that question, I'm not sure.
No, I'll let the chief.
Yeah, I, I, actually, I have been speaking with the, the health agent and we were just talking about it earlier this morning and that process is happening. We're aggressively looking at the best options, the locations and anticipation of the rollout that, you know, should be. I'm, I'm hoping within a month, month and a half, but I don't know what that timeframe is because we're really waiting for the state to solidify that. But we are, that, that process is happening right now, the dialogue between the emergency management and with the health agent. It's, it's a very, very active dialogue. We should have some more informative answers forthwith.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right, we have Elm Street sidewalk discussion on the agenda. Mike, you want it, you want to kick it off?
Yeah, we'll get, well, we've got a couple of letters from some concerned citizens about the dangers of Elm Street, you know, having Triton on it, having Governor Dummer on it, kids running, kids biking. And now, it's, it's warped a little bit because now I've gotten letters today from people in high road. I, I don't know what, what this procedure is, you know? High road's a different animal because it's a state highway. But it's like, I, I know down here, from Morgan Avenue to, I think, Tendercrops, they, they, they did that, they, they just hot-topped the highways for the first time in years. And I'm not sure who paid, who did that, is the town did it, I'm not sure. I didn't see it done, all I know is I was walking the dog and they were all done. Very nice job, but I guess people are concerned that with the speeding cars, like I said, there's one thing, I love the, the new, the roads are great, but when you get a smooth roads, cars go faster and they just want a place, you know, that they can walk and ride and so forth. So, I don't know where to start, but I think it's a, it's a valid issue to bring up all over town. Don't everyone answer at once?
I can weigh in if, if it would be helpful for the high road. Yes, I'm not gonna leave you hanging, Mike, I'm not gonna leave you hanging. As far as high road, I, I can speak to that a little bit. That's District Four, Highway Department, and I'm assuming, and I think it's a fair assumption that they, they own the sidewalk as well, I don't know this for fact, but I'm gonna guess that they would. So, the first place somebody would start is a letter to District Four, you know, with an inquiry.
They did a, they did a real nice job, John, on the way down, I mean.
It looks good, it looks really good, yeah.
What's District Four?
That's, that's District Four for, I'm sorry, for Mass DOT, you know?
Okay.
This area falls into District Four out of Arlington. I mean, I can forward the contact information to somebody who our rep is for this area, I can help any way you want.
So, if they were to put sidewalks on that road, it would be their responsibility, right?
I don't know this for fact, but I would, I feel, I feel comfortable saying, yeah, probably.
Yeah, that's a state, that's state highway.
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's the other thing, the other thing that came up in one of the letters today I received was the fact that from down by the Lower, Lower Green, you know, down in that area, I guess it's, it's really random sidewalks and people, it's, everyone just thinks it's a good idea.
So, I, I, when we got this letter on Elm Street, I had asked the town administrator to look into what the cost would be to endeavor sidewalks, so, and Tracy, can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, I mean, there's, there's a tremendous amount of design and engineering work that has to go into it as well as construction. The general rule was a million a mile. That's, that's kind of the, the overall general rule. It's usually a little bit less than that, but that's what you can budget. That, when you enter into like the capital planning phase of something like that, that's the number that you'd have in your head.
Is, is there grants out there from the federal government or anything for this kind of thing?
Um, I haven't applied for any lately. I will tell you, in nineteen years and working in West Newbury, we were always applying and trying to get funding and were never successful. So, in, in terms of how it would work here, if the board wanted to move forward with something like that, we engage a, an engineer and start working through the capital planning process and putting it on and as something that you'd want to see addressed in the future, get it onto our, you know, into our capital planning committee on their radar and move it forward through that process. But it is very expensive because you have to meet Mass DOT standards.
And they have to be handicap accessible, I'm sure, too.
Of course.
Yeah, all of that, yeah.
Yep.
I, I guess, um, tooth, the way, unless, does anyone else have any thoughts off the get-go before I start?
I do.
Jerry?
Yeah, um, we have, watching us, Jim Moran, it was, it was his letter that kicked off this issue. So, if we could have perhaps some input from Mr. Moran about what the need is, because he, I know he lives down there. That would be great. And also, I, I guess we need to have input from our DPW, so I think that would be helpful.
I spoke with James.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, before we hear from Jim, does anyone from the board have any thoughts, comments?
Well, I think I'd like to hear what Jim has to say and then I, I can probably follow up, but I have two thoughts on this.
Okay, and before we go to the phone, I just want to say, you know, an interesting and noble thing to do. I think perhaps someday, we have so many financial irons in the fire right now, it's tough. I know on Orchard Street, one thing that would alleviate some of the traffic, you know, the foot traffic, especially for the students. When Caldwell Farm went in, there was supposed to be a trail connected between Caldwell Farm and Governor Dummer and they never held up their end of the bargain. This trail was supposed to go in as part of the, the permitting and licensing for their project and it never got done. So that, I know from a town standpoint, you know, we've been after this to get done for the last few years and we've got to the point where the DPW is gonna cut that out. And as soon as they do, the Triton students, at, at most times, will not have to go on the street anymore on that stretch.
That's, that's a big, that's a big thing right there.
We need that trail connector done. So, okay, moving on to.
I think he's.
Yeah, he's.
He's there, Jim.
There. He's there.
Jim?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Here, here's my comments on the sidewalk. It's on Elm Street. It's obvious there's safety considerations when I watch people, watch people walk and ride bikes and cross-country runners on there. I've seen several near accidents, I'm sure other people in the area have also. So, I think there's a need and I would recommend that you start the process and it wouldn't have to be done at one time, it could be done in stages. So, a little thought to it, I don't believe I'm the only one in town talking about sidewalks. I believe that the FinCon meeting just a month or two ago, Mr. Yassir had suggested that maybe some sidewalks be put in on Main Street, which also makes some sense. But in this day and age, we have more walking and bicycle traffic. Those considerations, I think, would be a great capital improvement for the town. Again, over years, and, and like the paving work that you've done over the past five years, you know, maybe a sidewalk program across town would want to be considered. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any, any further comments or discussion on this topic tonight?
Jerry, did you want to go first?
Um, no, no, I'm good.
Okay, um, I, I think that this, I think having a plan for sidewalks for the town isn't a bad idea and Jim's approach to having dedicated funding source, similar to what we did for the roads, to have sidewalks, might be a good idea, but we'd have to pass it at town meeting and it would be an override and it would increase our, our taxes. Once that, that is cut in behind, I know the plan is to cut that trail in, it will get the kids running off the road and the, the Triton Regional School District has a policy where all students are bust. So, they're, they're really, I mean, I know students do walk, my kids did go to school there, a lot of kids drive themselves. And right now, we are seeing an uptick in walking because of COVID, everybody is staying at, at home. But if we were to do anything with Elm Street, I would want to coordinate it with Triton to see what they feel as if there is a need, because like I said, all students are bust. That's, and that's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Alicia. Okay, moving on. Are you ready for an administrator's report, Tracy?
I am. I'm happy to be able to bring some good news. We received notification from the Department of Revan, the Division of Local Services, that our free cash has been certified at three million, two hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Last year, as you may recall, we certified at a little over two-point-eight million. And at our subsequent town meetings, we appropriated a little over one-point-two. So, part of the three million that we have now was what we didn't spend. So part of the 3 million that we have now was what we didn't spend from last year. So that was about 1.6 million that remained unexpended. On the revenue side, and I should start by saying that free cash is, is basically the result of our operations. So when we go into a budgeting season, we're estimating what we're going to get for revenues. We're asking, we're appropriating what we're going to spend for expenditures. And at the end of the fiscal year, we compare the actuals against those estimates. And the results of our operation closes out and becomes what we call free cash. On the, the revenue side, my budgeting was a bit too aggressive. And as we go into fiscal year 2022 budgeting, I do expect to be much more conservative this year as there is quite a bit of uncertainty right now with COVID and revenues and what they're going to look like. So I'm going to tighten those up and be quite a bit more conservative. So even though we were, ended up about 900,000 to the good, we had a few unanticipated revenues that weren't planned for, things like a little over 460,000 for the foreclosure auction. We had $28,000 in rollback taxes. We had $46,000 in non-recurring revenues, things like streetlight rebates and prior year storm reimbursements from FEMA. So, so we had things come in that we hadn't planned for, but those are one-time, non-recurring revenues. So if they hadn't been in, we would have been just too close on our revenue projections. On the expenditure side, we closed out just about a million dollars, which is a significant amount. Generally, we're, we're far less than that. But again, we had a lot of really good things happen. Our reserve fund, we didn't have a lot of extraordinary and unforeseen expenses last year. So we closed out over 60,000 from our reserve fund. We received credits from our insurance company because of all the trainings that our managers had been taking. We had a number of personnel changes and saved about $66,000 during the transition of the changes. Saved about $50,000 on health insurance. One of the biggest cost savings was about 155,000. If you recall, we had intended to go out and issue short-term bond anticipation notes. Because the market was so favorable, we didn't do that. We went straight to the market. We got a great rate because of our AAA rating, so we saved about $155,000 there. Essex Tech tuition went down over $100,000, and that's directly correlated to the number of students who attend from Newbury. Snow removal, most of you probably recall, we had a great year. There was over $100,000 of savings there. So overall, 2020 was, was a great year, except for the, except for the whole pandemic thing, which we're not feeling in 2020. We'll likely feel the impact of that more in fiscal year 2022. So we're, we're still awaiting the COA report. But as we contemplate the need for a town hall COA, these funds will no doubt come in very handy. As you might recall, last year at the annual town meeting, we swept about $1 million into the savings for, for the project, and we will certainly have an opportunity to do that this fiscal year as well at, at our town meeting. In terms of our website, the HR board and the managers will be working towards completing a thorough review of the website with each individual section being kind of scrutinized. It's been a while since we've done this. Actually, I don't think we've done it since we initially got our website up and running. So the goal is going to be updating, obviously, the information that's available, eliminating out of date or any kind of unnecessary information that we have up there, and just working to continuously improve the information that we're able to provide to our residents. Chief Lucy had mentioned COVID. By all accounts, right now, our remote work plan has been working very well. There haven't been any delays. I haven't heard any complaints to date. But we're all working really hard to try to anticipate, you know, communication gaps as the pandemic has certainly interrupted our normal routines. We're not seeing each other on a daily basis like we used to. But we're, like I said, by all accounts, it's, it seems to be working very well at this time. So that's all for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Tracy.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Ms. Blake.
Yeah, Jerry, just one second, Jerry. Tracy, I want to thank you for all your hard work you do. The finances and accounting, your skills really shine here. There aren't a lot of communities around that can continually budget and on budget or under budget for projects, and that's how we accumulate this amount of free cash. And it's absolutely due to the financial housekeeping that's going on, and that's, you know, mostly in part to you, and you deserve some credit for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We've got a, we've got a tremendous team, and it's, it's really been a pleasure. It's been an honor to work with them.
Jerry?
Sure. Ms. Blake, you're probably not, not the person to ask. I probably need to ask the, the fire chief, but from a, from a administrative on the website. The burning season starts January 15th, but if you go online to try to buy a burn permit, it just says the burning, the date of the burning season. So when is that ability to buy a burn permit online going to happen?
Well, I actually do know the answer to that because we had a conversation about it this morning, so that question is very timely. What the chief is putting in place is he's going to have it available both on the website, and he's also going to implement a lockbox system at both of the fire station locations, because a lot of people have requested or have asked him if they can not do it through the website. But I understood that it was already up and running. I will go take a look and double check, because you should already be able to do that.
I tried today.
And you weren't able to get in?
And the lockbox is for them to deposit their $10?
Yep. So some people were concerned they wanted to be able to do it that very day. So you'll be able to put an envelope with a check and just drop it in, and they'll check it periodically throughout the day. But there will, cash will not be accepted.
Okay.
People need to understand, no cash.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I'll double check that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
JR, I'd like to take and also, on the back of what you said, not only with the building project going on in town and every other thing going on with COVID and everything else, that's, that's really significant. I mean, I think that makes Tracy the budget Yoda, because that's really, that's, that's a heck of an achievement, so, and her team. So thank you, Tracy.
I've said it before, I think we're extremely very well managed. I, I, I sound in great shape.
Moving on, under correspondence, we received an email from Jack Rybicki. Field, an email from Jack Rybicki regarding COA senior center and town hall needs. Golf Center letter from a Newbury Port resident. Letter dated 12/6/2020 about channel changes. Another Xfinity letter dated 12/12/2020, courtesy adjustment. A letter from National Grid on December 16th regarding the yearly operational plan and vegetation management.
Can I ask a question on that, that last one?
Yes.
I guess they're asking, and I just read it quickly. I don't know, Tracy, if you can answer this. They're asking if there are any of the town properties have changed, or wells or private wells and stuff. Does the DPW, does James go out and take a look at that and give them adjustments? Or?
Oh, if it was town property, we'd notify them.
Right.
Right.
Okay, but somebody's looking at it for the town property and notifying them.
We would make the appropriate notifications, any changes as they occur.
Okay, thank you.
We have meeting minutes to approve, draft meeting minutes from 12/22/2020. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
I beat you, Mike.
All right, second.
All right.
It's like, we hit the button first.
Discussion. Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. We have warrants. Is there a motion to approve the warrants?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Also, if we could have a vote to allow the chair to sign on the board's behalf?
Motion made, second.
Discussion. All those, oh, roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Anyone have any meeting updates?
I have one. The, I've been, the Massachusetts Municipal Association reached out to me, asking me if I wanted to be reappointed to their fiscal policy committee again for 2021. So I had said yes. I won't know if I've gotten that appointment until the Board of Directors meets. I think it's on February 9th. So I have thrown my, my name in there again to be on that, on that committee. I find I, I learn a lot from them. They're, they're, that's a good, the fiscal policy committee is a good, a good committee to be on. They talk, they talk about school budgets. They talk about, that's where I learned a lot about the, the Department of Unemployment Insurance ripoff that was going on and anything that I find, you know, meaningful that I think is, will help Newbury, I do forward it along to Tracy, so.
MMA is having their meeting too, in two weeks, which is always a, a very eventful, a lot of good information we get.
Yeah, it's virtual this year, so.
So the good thing is, if you miss something, you can always go back and watch it.
Yeah. And that's it.
Super. Thank you, Alicia. So I guess we will, identifying a vote to recess until 7:15?
Make a motion to recess till 7:15, second.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Our regular meeting, because we've concluded business, so we don't need to recess.
So we just have to end it?
Martha, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Is that, does that seem the proper thing to do?
No, I mean, this was, the two public hearings are part of your meeting agenda. Your meeting stays open.
Okay.
We can go in recess, though.
Yeah, so you just step away and reconvene.
Okay.
All right.
So I'll see everybody at 7:15.
All right.
Thank you.
So is everybody here from your board who's participating?
I see Jeff, Jerry, and Mike and myself, yes.
You're good.
Okay, Alicia, you're already open, right?
We're open.
Okay, then let me do what I need to do here. Okay, as a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I'm the chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present, if you can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. George Morse?
Yes.
Thank you. Larry Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody Knight?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary Stone?
I haven't seen her.
Town council, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Brian Winner?
And Winner is present?
Thank you, sir. My town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative also. Martha Taylor?
Here.
Thank you. Emily Noble?
Here.
Thank you. Anticipated speakers presented on the agenda, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Eric Sorensen?
He's mute.
He's muted.
Okay.
He did say yes.
Okay, great. Scott Cameron?
I haven't seen him. I don't know if he's coming tonight.
Okay, Mike Lamb?
Have not seen him either.
Okay, Michael Rosen?
Present.
Thank you. TJ Melvin?
Present.
Thank you. Timothy Snay?
Present.
Thank you. Good evening. This is January 12th, 2021, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board, which is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public access. And as such, the governor's order superses the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, is being convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the planning board's section of the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http-zoom.us and enter meeting ID 83271413056, or by calling 9292056099 and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that both public hearings on the agenda are being held jointly with a slug for public hearings. For this Zoom meeting, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the review. Applicants and/or their representatives may be called upon to speak and, if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your name, your attention after you've been called. With regards to our business grounds, we have some things to go over here. So before I turn to the first item on the agenda, please allow me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate minutes. I, as the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone, which is star six to toggle to mute or unmute, or your computer, the mute button, when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recorder. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With regards to public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during the public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, click on the participants button in the menu below the photo gallery at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Hover your cursor over this area if you don't see it. A list of participants will open in display on the right. At the bottom of this participation area, you will have an option to click on the blue raise hand button. Please ensure that your name is fully and accurately displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions or comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed. The system lists in order of who first raises their hand with the raise function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask the question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, participant, or his or her representatives the opportunity to clarify. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those who raised hand function column, and again, afford the participant, applicant, representative. Should there be any physical or electronic submission of questions or concerns? to speak. Should there be any physical or electronic submission of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant, applicant, representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. Okay, just to let folks know, we have two public hearings tonight. Each hearing session will be limited approximately 30 to 45 minutes, maximum possible, but of courtesy, courtesy to the applicants and the members of the public as well as the board members. So with that, we're going to start with the first public hearing, which will be the Newbury Golf Center. So let me just minimize this for a second. All right. So with that, the planning board will be considering an application for modification to a previously approved site plan submitted by Eric Sorensen, President of Newbury Golf Center, Inc., for the Newbury Golf Center 131133 151 Scotland Road. Sessions map R43 lots 211 and 4B. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work of the project. Please note that the approval requires a super majority, three out of five, the planning board. The original site plan approval was granted in November 15th, 2017. Alicia?
The Select Board is considering an application submitted by Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center Incorporated, for modification for the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center 131133 and 151 Scotland Road. Assessors map R43 lots 211 and 4B. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work for the project. Note, the approval requires a super majority, four out of five votes of the Select Board. Since JR Colby has recused himself, approval of the special permit modification request will require all four remaining members to vote in favor. The original special permit was granted November 15th, 2017. I will note that JR has recused himself for the proceedings, and that I will serve as acting chair for the Select Board's public hearing.
Great. Thank you, Alicia. What I'd like to do is I just want to recap some things before our session begins, so that there's an understanding, historical perspective of all that's going on. This applicant was looking to open a business in the end of August, and so as a result, a number of steps occurred. A sitwalk with both boards was held on August 7th of 2020 to review site conditions and lighting as installed in preparation for an August 26th session of public hearings, and in response to the applicant's, applicant's request to open. Just prior to this sitwalk, staff and board members learned that the lighting installed on the buildings and poles was not the same lighting type or manufacturer, which was Musco, that had been approved as part of the original project approvals. Substitutions had not been presented to the boards for review and approval. At the sitwalk, boards observed light trespass, glare, and shadowing on the building properties immediately to the east of the project site. A follow-up nighttime site visits were made on Tuesday, August 11th, and Friday, August 21st, by the boards' designated representatives and staff to work with the applicant's engineer and electrician to try to identify possible ways to mitigate lighting impacts. At August 22nd, 2020, session of the public hearing, the boards voted on a superseding condition that would allow the applicant to open, open a business subject to certain conditions as follows. These are the conditions that the applicant agreed to. I'm going to read those just so everyone can understand those. And this was described as the Newbury Golf Center Public Hearing, Select Board Special Permit Modification, Planning Board Site Plan Approval Modification, August 26th, 2020, voted unanimously by each board. I move that, notwithstanding any prior superseding conditions adopted by the boards to the contrary, the applicant's application and plans, and most recently revised on August 25th, 2020, are provisionally and temporarily approved only to the extent necessary to authorize the town's officials, in particular, the town's building commissioner, to permit temporary use and occupancy of the site provided. Number one, prior to any use and occupancy, all of the conditions items set forth in the conservation agents' August 20, August 20th, 2020 list, as updated on August 26th, 2020, must be completed to the agent's satisfaction. Number two, prior to any use and occupancy, all of the conditions and items set forth in the building commissioners' August 24th, 2020 list, as updated on August 26th, 2020, must be completed to the building inspector's satisfaction. Number three, prior to any use and occupancy, all the conditions listed set forth in the health inspectors' August 20th, 2020, and August 25th, 2020 list, must be completed to the health inspectors and health agents' satisfaction. Number four, no operations or activities allowed any later than 7:30 from September 15th through September 30th, 7 o'clock, October 1st through October 31st, 6:30 November 1st through November 15th, 5 o'clock, November 16th through March 30th, 8:00 PM, April 1st through September 14th. Number five, notwithstanding any else in this order, no exterior lighting of any kind is permitted to be turned on at any time, except the exterior security lighting installed on the Pro Shop Ice Cream Shop building. To the extent any other provisions of this order conflicts or should be interpreted through conflict, this paragraph shall supersede and control. This order shall not be instituted for final action by the board or approval of the applicant before it and/or any of the plans and submissions submitted, conjunction therewithin. It is the intent of the board only to provide this limited and temporary permission as an accommodation to the applicant during this ongoing public hearing process while the applicant continues to finalize its mitigation plan, in particular, the lighting plan, which shall include the funding by the applicant of a lighting peer review by an expert selected by the boards. In doing so, the board recognizes that this is the highly unorthodox step without any sanction putting into traditional zoning process contemplated by the town's zoning bylaws or zoning act. Notwithstanding, the board acknowledges the difficulties of finalizing and reviewing the mitigation plan in light of the history of this matter and the impacts that the consequential length of public hearings processes may have on the applicant's business. This provisional and temporary approval shall immediately be null and void upon the violation of any of the above conditions and shall expire as set forth above. It is the board's desire that any permit, certificate, or approval issued by any town official be conditioned, as may be appropriate, so as to require a full and complete adherence to all the conditions set forth herein, and that any such permit, certificate, or approval accordingly be rescinded, revoked, or expires, as may be appropriate under the circumstances, so as to be consistent with this order. The hearing was continued to October 14th, 2020, to provide ample time for lighting consultants to be selected, do peer review of existing conditions, and make recommendations. Town Council then conducted a search to identify a potential lighting consultant, and on September 18th of 2020.
All about the lights, right now, he's getting.
Martha might need to mute someone there?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Thanks.
As for one, Sorensen said, for the.
Thanks very much. Town Council conducted a search, identified for a potential lighting consultant, and on September 18th requested CAD files and .IES files from the applicant's team for the consultant's use. The applicant's team said that they would be provided after the consultant was retained. The next hearing session held on October 14th was then continued until November 10th. Due to scheduling issues, issues with the identified lighting consultant, Martha Taylor sought out another consultant, whose proposal was submitted to the applicant on October 19th, 2020. On October 21st, 21 of 2020, Attorney Rosen responded that the applicant was not comfortable with the cost and would like to seek another expert at a lower cost. Feedback from the applicant was promised for Friday, February, October 23rd, 2020. On November 9th, the applicant requested that he be allowed to engage his prior lighting vendor from Musco to take readings on the site, not consistent with the requirement that the lighting consultant be independent and not previously involved with the project. On November 10th, public session hearing was continued without discussion until tonight, which is January 12th. From a historical perspective, on November 17th, Town Council forwarded proposals from the original lighting consultant to Attorney Rosen for transmission to his client. He, he, Towns Council, Town Council subsequently reached out to Attorney Rosen for a status report on November 24th, as well as December 3rd, with no response. He again reached out on January 5th, 2021, on which day Attorney Rosen said that, Rosen said that he had reached out to his client and would advise as soon as he heard anything. No further response from attorney was received by the town. On Sunday, January 10th, at 4:49, Eric Sorensen sent an email to Martha Taylor with materials for tonight, with materials for tonight's public hearing, including a photometric plan and a site plan showing revised light. So I just want to ask Alicia, and I want to, and I'll give the perspective of first, the planning board. The materials that were, were received are submitted on Sunday are, from a planning board's perspective, not appropriately timed. They should have been received by Thursday to the town planners, of course, for review and submission to board members. So from the perspective of the planning board, they are not items that would be discussed this evening. And Alicia, I'll let you decide, or let us know what the Select Board's position is.
Well, the Select Board is going to follow the planning board's decision. The the information that the town received was not what the town was expecting to receive. We were expecting to receive a peer review from an independent lighting consultant, and instead, we were received new plans submitted past a deadline, which were asking for additional lighting when the previous lighting issues haven't been addressed by the applicant. So it is the feeling of the board that we won't be discussing those.
So just for clarification, my, my understanding, Alicia, that it's the policy of the Select Board that all materials to be considered for a meeting must be.
Correct.
Okay, in a timely manner, which would have been Thursday of last week.
Correct.
So the, the, the point here is that there has been nothing responsive, which has been submitted to the boards for review. At this time, the applicant has not complied with the requirement to fund a peer review by a third party independent lighting consultant. And there has been a request for additional lighting. When our original lighting situations have not been addressed. With that as opening remarks, and from a historical perspective, I apologize for having to read that, but I wanted to make sure that I had all of the information accurately. I could delineate when sidewalks took place, what the boards have done, what Town Council has done to try to facilitate a lighting consultant. The fact that I think there were five email correspondences from the Town Council to the applicant's council without a response with regards to this process moving it forward and taking it to the next level. At this time, I want to just see if there are any initial comments from members of the planning board, and then Alicia, I'd probably ask you to do the same for, for your board. So I'm just going to run down, I'm going to first start with my vice chair. Larry, do you have any comments on what's going to be submitted? We will be asking to hear from the applicant in public comment as well, before we go into.
I don't have anything right now.
Okay, thanks, Larry. George, do you have anything as well, sir?
Not right now.
Thank you. Leslie, do you have anything?
Nothing right now, Pete.
Thanks, Leslie. Woody, do you have anything, sir?
No, not right now. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, great. And I don't think Mary's with us. Okay, Alicia, I'm going to turn it over to you, to your board.
Thank you, Pete. I'm going to go through my board. Jeff Walker, do you have any, anything to say?
No, I guess it seems a shame when here that, you know, we couldn't review what's going on.
Mike Doyle, do you have anything you'd like to say? Any comment? You're, you're muted, Mike.
Not at this time.
And how about Jerry? Do you have any comments at this time, Jerry?
No, I would like to hear from the applicant, though.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Okay, so you're set, Alicia?
Yes, I'm all set.
Okay. At this time, I entertain responses from Eric or anyone in your team. I don't know if there is anyone else on your team, but I'll, I think I'll let you start, Eric.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So we, we will fund the.
Eric, do me a favor, just name it and, and address, please, for the record.
Sure. Eric Sorensen, Newbury Golf Center, 131 Scotland Road. So to kind of give our perspective of things, obviously, we were going back and forth with the consultant. We did want to bring in our own consultant. The meeting in November was postponed. We are willing to fund the lighting consultant. We added the Musco poles, which last summer during our discussion, we were going to take them, we took them off and said we would come back in front of the board in 2021, which it is now. So we would like to fund the consultant with review of the parking lot lights and the, the poles in the landing area. We've realized that being open four months, 35% of our business is nighttime, and that we do need to have, in order to survive, we need to have those poles. And having one, a light consultant review all of it at once seems the practical way to do it, rather than break it up and come back in front of the board, do it all at once with both the parking lot lights and the landing area poles. Just to go over what we've also done since then, on the eastern side of the property, we've had, we have completed, we've put a total of 20 trees, we've put 510 feet of burn between three and six feet high. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from your team that would like to address the boards?
If I might.
Just identify yourself, please, Mike.
Michael Rosen, the counsel for the applicant. Attorney Winner would probably have the exact figures. But, you know, one of the concerns that my client had in November was the original quote, which my client agreed to for a consultant that the town did approve and engage, was significantly lower than the, the funds requested of my client later in November. And the reason for that, and it, you know, there was communication between Attorney Winner and I. The first consultant that was engaged went silent and essentially went missing. When that first consultant left, that caused a significant delay of roughly 30 days or longer, at which point Mr. Winner, Attorney Winner, found a second consultant, but I believe. But I believe the quote from the second consultant was roughly two and a half to three times the original quote. That is what caused Mr. Sorensen some heartache at the time after we had agreed to fund the significantly lower quote. Once the November hearing was canceled. Mr. Attorney Winner, as a courtesy, did reach out to the original consultant. The original consultant, I believe, came back and is the proposal you have now. It's not at the original price, but certainly it's not as high as the interim consultant. That was looking at two and a half to three times the dollar amount. And as these costs were piling up and once the hearing was postponed from November to January. Eric reached out to Mr. Barry at Musco Lighting and as they talked about the project. It became readily apparent that what a consultant is going to do and the measurements they're going to take at the lot line. For light trespass, analyzing the data and analyzing the fixtures. They would redo the exact same thing. Again, duplicating the cost if and when Eric were to come back for the polls in the spring. So after some discussion with Mr. Barry and in order to. Provide Eric comfort that with the polls added, there would not be a light trespass issue. Musco Consulting did do the photometric plan, which was submitted. Obviously, we don't have to look at it this evening, but it is now at least part of the record. And that does show that Musco Lighting is representing that the plan with the additional polls will result in zero light trespass. And it was after Eric had the level of knowing that Musco wouldn't. In behind their design and could show it on a photometric plan. That Mr. Sorensen determined that it was worth submitting. Not all of the light poles, but several of them back onto the plan. And then acknowledging, as he said earlier tonight, that they would agree to move forward and pay for the consultant. To start to work and review the work that Mr. Barry has put together at Musco. To confirm that it does in fact comport with what the town is looking for.
Thank you for your narrative. You have now compelled me to ask the town council for his recollection of the conversations, the cost associated. The timeline and the actual reason why. The meeting was continued from November for two months until today. So Attorney, would you mind, please?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Peter. So I actually just pulled up some of my emails to confirm my own memory. And since we're talking about the first consultant that I reached out to and. And contacted following the, the joint boards meeting in August. The timeline really starts shortly after that meeting. My, my first exchange with this gentleman was actually in early September. So if we're, if we're, we're talking about the full timeline, we're actually talking about a four and a half month period, not just from November to now. But early September until now, when we attempted to onboard a consultant. So I contacted this individual and got a proposal which I had forwarded to Attorney Rosen and there was an exchange about it, I can't remember. And I'd have to look through my, my information to get the exact price, but I believe it was somewhere in the, on the order of $4,000 or $4,500. Maybe, maybe Martha has a clearer memory of it, but I think that's the ballpark of where it was. And it's true that although we exchanged. Certain edits to the, the engagement agreement. We had a scheduling conflict or an inability to communicate during sort of an important period to onboard that consultant. So Martha looked at a second individual who came back with a different proposal. And we tried to pass that along and see if that was acceptable to the applicant. As you've heard, it was not. And then. All that led us up to the, the November meeting where, you know, we had hoped to have this accomplished, but it still wasn't accomplished. So that was continued yet again, so that we could either, one of two things could happen. I could reach back out to the first consultant and see if we could retain that person. Or for the applicant to propose. You know, a potential consultant. And again, the idea being an independent, you know, third party consultant who hadn't worked on this project before. So we were both trying to identify those people. I went back to the first consultant. I exchanged emails with that gentleman. November 12, so just two days after the, the public hearing was continued on the, on November 10. We agreed upon an engagement letter and I forwarded that to Attorney Rosen. But that was not acceptable. So between. The last email exchange I had with that individual was November 17. And of course, we, we never confirmed any engagement with him since he wasn't acceptable to the applicant. And between November 17 and today. No other individual has been suggested to me for consideration. So we had someone ready to go on the table, but. It, it didn't come together.
So just, just to clarify. The town reached out and found at least two individuals or tried to contact two individuals. To try to facilitate to have an independent individual be involved in this discussion. Am I correct?
That is correct.
And I'm just going to pose the question to Attorney Rosen, and how many independent individuals were you able to reach out to, sir?
I believe three different individuals and I did in fact communicate with Attorney Winner. When you first started the process in August or September, I was told that the preference was that the board should identify the person. So that there would be no issue or concern that there might be some bias. And then we went looking again in late October, early November to see if we could find anybody else. And unfortunately, we did not have any luck, which is why we then circled back with Moscow.
Right, who is not an independent individual as per our agreement.
Correct.
And that's why we're here tonight. Okay, so I think Attorney, when I just want to let you know that I appreciate the efforts that you made to try to facilitate this process. And to try to get a couple of consultants and actually didn't have some information that was necessary. Allow for an accurate proposal, all that the cost would be associated with that process. That's a very important piece of this puzzle as well. Okay. I think I'd want to see if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak, providing any new information to the boards. We're looking for new information or new comments because we've had this discussion going on for quite some time. So if there's some. New correspondence or some new information, please be sure to share it. And Martha, I think I'm going to start with you. Did you receive some emails?
We've received a couple of emails since the. Since the October 14 meeting, one was an email from Liz McCollough dated October 27, 2020. And one from Glenn Schneider on December 25, 2020.
These are available for review and they're posted, correct?
They're not, they're not on the website, but they are available for anybody who would like to see them.
Great, great. Do you see anyone with any raised hands regarding new comments? Information?
Not seeing any. Raised hands using the raised hand function. I'm scanning to see if there's anybody. No, I'm not seeing anybody.
Then I think what I'd like to do is I'd like to go into a board discussion for a few minutes. And if that's okay with you, Alicia?
Yes, Pete.
Okay, great. So I'm, I'd like to open it up at this time for any discussion with. With the planning board. Larry, do you want to start with any discussion points?
Well, you know, I wish I could tell you my memory of all these events was perfect and it's not, but I'll give you my best shot. It, it seems to me that some months ago, the lighting was taken off the table. And it has crept back into the discussion. And I wonder if, if we ought not to extricate the lighting discussion from the rest of the discussion at this point. For lack of a better way to put it, I think leaving the lighting aside, we're probably pretty close to wrapping this up. I know that there may be some, some. You know, issues about stabilization of the site, but I think the conservation commission has that well in hand. And we do have the. Site barriers on the east side of the property, but. From what I'm hearing tonight, there've been some additional efforts in that direction. I'm inclined to think that we ought to. Put the lighting aside, allow Eric to, and, and you know, it's been very confusing. And I don't know how we unravel the knot, but I'm wondering if that ought not to be the subject of. A further petition for modification. In other words, let's see if we can wrap up the other remaining issues. Let Eric come forward with whatever he feels is the best plan without prejudice to what's gone on before. Because I don't know, again, how we extricate all that. And just see what, let that, you know, go forward on its own merits.
Thank you, Larry. George, any thoughts, sir?
Yes, my memory is as good as Larry's, but it seemed to me that Eric or through his attorney. Said at one point, let's set the siding and lighting aside. And take care of all the other stuff because the lighting wasn't that important to him right away. And I don't know whether he can confirm that or not confirm it, but that was my feeling about it.
Let, let me help with that, George. The lighting that was taken off the table. Were the tall 50 foot holes, Martha, correct me if I'm wrong. In the landing area of the, of the field. So those were taken off the discussion. And that's what the record, Martha, if I'm correct, the wreck, the plan that was approved does not have the lighting on. Is that correct?
Right.
That's correct.
Yep, 50 foot poles were taken off.
Okay, great. So the plan that we're working with does not have any 50 foot poles and we're working with the plan that we have, nothing that was submitted. We're working with the approved plan because that's the important thing. We have to not muddle the waters here. The boards have to follow what we agreed upon. Yes. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to clarify, George.
All right, well, I stand corrected then.
Okay.
Michael, when I.
Hold, hold on, the board's discussing attorney.
An error and, and one of the things you just said, and I just want to, before it gets too far down the line.
Yes, Mr. Rosen.
The approved plan has the poles. The plan submitted for the modification does not. Because the trees were, were, were taken down after the 2017 approval. So I just wanted to clarify, the question was, does the approved plan have the poles? And the answer is actually the approved does. So I, I just wanted to correct a point.
Okay, and I'll have Attorney Winner confirm that. My understanding is the 50 foot poles were out of the equation. They were removed.
On the amendment application, correct.
Okay, so they're, 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 they're not on our, on our radar screen.
Yes, as I said, they're in the approved plan, but they are not in the current version of the amendment that's before you.
And, and may I offer just a comment?
Yes, Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I think when you're referencing approved plan, I understood you to mean. The plan that the board provisionally approved in August of 2020, which does not show the 50 foot pole Musco lights. If you mean approved as in approved in 2017, well, that's a different story. That's not in front of you. But the plan that is in front of you, a most recent plan of record is the 82520 plan, which does not show the pole lights. Those were taken off pursuant to a lengthy discussion with the board.
Great. Clarification.
Yeah, we confirm that.
Thank you. Okay, George, I think, okay, Leslie, do you have anything that you want to say at this time? Or any comments?
No, but I think what Larry said very eloquently. I think moving forward with the other things and coming back to the lighting seems. As far as time is concerned and getting things moved forward would be the best route to go.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Woody, sir, do you have any thoughts or comments?
I agree with Larry as well. It's, we, if you separate the two, we can move on with some of the other things.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alicia, I'm going to have a call over to you, please.
Thank you, Pete. I'm going to ask a similar discussion of my board. Jeff, do you have any comments?
I actually agree with Larry also. It's just also on top of that. And I think, you know, the golf team has to think about. If you're going to try to take care of the landing area. In the same time you're taking care of the parking lot lights. If I understand that was what they were going to do. It's probably going to take a lot longer than trying to amend some of the complications with the parking lot lights. Otherwise, I have to do what Larry said.
Mike? Here, I'm mute.
I agree with Jeff to separate, let's get going and then let's deal with the lights as soon as possible.
And Jerry?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mike and Larry as well.
Thank you. Back to you, Pete.
Okay, great. So. With regard to a final site plan. We do have a deviation from the original proposed mitigation plan. And work, the berms and alternative plantings. Were done, they were done without the board's approval and the applicant understood that he was doing that at his risk and attempt to mitigate the situation. And we're aware of that. So. I don't know if there are any thoughts with regards to mitigation and I just want to, I just want to pivot back for a second to Martha. Because I know that you have been involved with the plans, the modifications, mitigation. I do know that conservation has extended for a year. Their, their aspect could just waiting for final mature growth to take place with regards to. Stabilization. So I just wanted to get your insight for a second.
I know there were, were some concerns that the conservation agent had regarding. You know, calculations, there were changes to the, the way the stormwater was being managed on the site, particularly in the, in the landing area. Sort of to the south of the driveway. I know that there have been discussions with, with Mike Laham about that. I haven't gotten any updates as to whether he's, you know, completely comfortable with the way that area was re-sculpted. For dealing with the stormwater, the berms that were, were put in. You know, were a deviation from the original modification plan that was submitted. There were some additional trees on the knob that was supposed to be planted along the eastern side of the boundary. And those are off the plan completely now. So there, you know, some things like that that haven't really been discussed.
So where to go with that component? Of the, of the discussion. Larry, do you have any thoughts on that?
A question for Martha. Martha, do you think we're in a position to issue any sort of a conditional decision on this? In other words, a final decision with, with, with particular conditions? I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I, I just, I'm trying to find a path forward for everybody here.
But I think one of the, one of the issues is that, you know, discussion all along was that it was recognized that because of the. The cutting of trees beyond the limit of work and some trees which, you know, were originally considered to be a buffer along the eastern. Property line between the site and the carbonies. You know, discussion had been that, well, let's, let's get the final grades done, let's get the lighting in, let's get. You know, let's get the buildings up and then see what really needs to be mitigated in terms of what the carbonies can see from their property. One of the issues is that, you know, even with the plan from Moscow showing. And there's still a little bit, the photometric shows a little bit of light trespass, but there's still issues with glare, there's issues with shadowing. Things that haven't been addressed, you know. Sort of even preceding putting the Musco lighting back on the plans. Issues that haven't been addressed in terms of screening and mitigation. So. You know, if there's any kind of conditional approval, that would still need to be taken into account. So.
My, my concern, Larry, is we've done conditions. And we seem to bump into things. So I see where you're going, but I'm just trying to figure the best way that we can get. but I'm just trying to figure the best way that we can get to the finish line without having any real significant obstacles, but we might not have an option but conditions with agents that'll have to enforce. Is that your thought?
I'm just, like I said, just looking for a way forward on this. It's yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
So we're kind of in the discussion of the final site plans deviations from the original mitigation berms, that sort of stuff. And so I'm just trying to, again, poke the planning board members for any thoughts. George, any thoughts on that piece? Not lighting, but this other piece?
I would think that all the other items that are locally done up by the top of the hill, I'm told, or I understand they're in good condition. The conditions, what are they gonna apply to? How long can they last? What are the penalties? What, when do they expire? And what do they mean when expired to the rest of the operation? But penalize that also.
Appreciate that very much. Leslie, any thoughts on this piece of the puzzle?
I don't have any thoughts right now, no.
Okay.
I just, you know, if we could just figure out a way to make this move forward and check it off the list.
Right. Thanks, Les. Woody?
I don't know. I don't have any thoughts either. I agree with Larry that, you know, it'd be nice to figure out a way to move forward, but if we come to an agreement and don't have any reaction, it makes it hard to like we have in the past.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Alicia, I'm gonna have it go to your board for the kind of same discussion points.
Hey, thanks, Pete. So we have the special permit process. This is a little different than what the planning board has for a site plan review. I guess I'm gonna start with Jeff. What are your thoughts on on mitigation and everything else besides lighting?
It's gone on so long and it's gone through so many reiterations that the landing area lights are certainly gonna complicate the issues. And I understand Eric wanting to save money, but certainly the other boards seem to have, are closer to tying up some of their issues, but and I forget exactly what all the issues are if we pin them out, one, two, three, on the parking lot lights in the
Well, excuse me, Jeff, we're gonna, we're gonna extract the lighting, take the lighting piece away, we're gonna discuss all the other mitigation that came from the the clear cutting, you know, that beyond the limit of work line, all the issues, all the other issues, not just, we're gonna take the lighting out for now, just the purpose of this discussion. And talk about the other
mitigation.
The other issues. Mitigation. Do you, can you even I don't know, maybe it would be helpful to our board, Martha, if you, I don't know if you have it in front of you, choose mitigation.
I'm sorry, broke up a little bit, Alicia.
I'm sorry. I said maybe it would be helpful for the board, my board anyways, if you had a short running list of what those other mitigation issues were. I'm not sure if you have that in front of you.
I don't have a full list in front of me. I mean, I think that you know, as I was saying before, this stormwater, changes in the stormwater management, tree planting and other, you know, landscaping that was not, not on the original plan and changes that were made during the process that weren't really discussed with the board. I don't have the plans that I can show side by side.
So I don't know if it's helpful, Alicia, with this piece, you know, things, things, things were done and then there was kind of a catch-up. It was, okay, this has happened and, okay, that wasn't what was kind of agreed upon, and then this is happening. And I understand this has been an ever-changing project and it's been shifting sands. You know, the board has that, we understand that. So I guess it's do the board members for your board members have any specific concerns or comments with that process or going forward in that component of this discussion? If that frames it better.
Is that more helpful, Jeff?
I just go back to the fact, the main issue seems to be lighting, you know, and until that's, you know, until that comes together, all the other issues seemingly fall in line anyway, but that's fine.
Okay. Mike? You're muted again.
I'm also right now.
Okay. Jerry?
Pardon me, I'm okay. For now.
Okay. So from my perspective, I'm thinking that, Martha, correct me if I'm wrong, the last date was August of the plans that we have before, it's August? They were dated August 24th, 2018? Is that the correct mitigation plan? I have so many versions of here in front of me, going back to 2017.
The one that was most recently presented to the board really is dated August 25th, 2020.
Okay, so I'm
Then there was a revision that was submitted to us on Sunday that had a revision date of, I think, the 6th on it, showing the Musco lighting added to it.
Okay. So I think there are still issues that need to be fleshed out, but I'm not sure if we can do it right now, as far as mitigation goes.
All right. I just was trying to pull up that on my, on my computer here, because I do have a plan that has a couple of dates on it. But with that said, the only other component of, not the only other, another component of consideration is what the final screen for the project site in the Butters will be. A lot of that was dependent on lighting. And as we're trying to do, we tried to negotiate this lighting piece the past four months and haven't been able to get that. So I'm not sure if the current final screening that's in place is going to be adequate or not adequate. And I'm not sure where that's going to leave us. So I'm gonna, with that confusing statement, I'm gonna run it back down my board. Larry, any thoughts on that piece, on the screening issue with regards to the Butters?
No, I mean, your point is well taken until the lighting is is resolved. I suppose we're not going to be able to determine the adequacy of that.
George, sir, any thoughts?
Yes, yeah, Woody mentioned berms in the parking area to cut down some of the lighting. Are those in yet?
Yes, those are in, George. And there was a berm of trees, because I know that you weren't able to do the sidewalk. There's a berm of trees that was put along the, Martha, correct me if I'm wrong, the eastern aspect of the site near the Carboni's property. And a berm was also built there, and there was a berm built in the parking lot, and I think trees were trees put on top of that berm as well, Martha?
I think that's where the fescue is.
Okay, okay. Does that help, George?
Yeah. Yeah, another question was about the security lights for staff closing up the ice cream operation, closing up all the other part of the operation in being able to transfer those items down to their cars. And we talked about that a fair amount, and has that been resolved so that there's lighting that can secure the safety of the staff?
I guess it depends on where the board goes. It could be, I mean, it's kind of looking like lighting is coming off the table. If that's the case, then that, you know, until the applicant comes back with, you know, a plan that outlines all the different components and with all its appropriate mitigation. If that's the case, then I think we're left to a scenario of, you know, hours of operation are, you know, like some other organizations, they're dust to dawn. And it's incumbent upon the applicant to make sure that his employees are up before it's dark and home. And that's how it'll have to work until there's something better in place, because we're going, it appears as though we're going in circles and we can't provide security. And at the same point, we've been trying for four months to to construct a plan, to have a consultant come in to give us a neutral opinion on how to get there, and we can't get there. So I think that's probably the direction we're headed in, George.
Okay, so if we're just settling down on the lighting, is everybody else, has everything in us been satisfied? So we can say, we can pass an agreement on that, a conditional decision, provided the lighting is taken care of either independently or separately, under a separate division.
Yeah, I think if we get to that point, I might have to turn to attorney winner and Tom Plender to help guide us with that decision. Yep, okay.
Separate that all out.
Right, okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Leslie? Thoughts on the final, the screening between the project site and the Butters?
Well, I suppose until you get the screening and taking care of, you really can't talk much about the lighting. So I guess we move forward with that particular article.
Okay, thank you. Woody, sir, any thoughts?
Well, going back to just in this meeting, other than the lighting, there's still some calculations of stormwater problems, right? And I believe that's what Martha said. And that's also based upon some as-built things that weren't originally on the original plans. And I do recall from our sidewalk, I, maybe there was a screening problem at the Carboni shed right at the hill there. And if I recall correctly too, that Eric and the Carboni's were supposed to try to work together on where the trees needed to go and where the screening problems are. And then thirdly, the third problem is it's hard to know where some of the screening needs to go if if there was lights. So, but with lights being off the board, I know that from what Martha said, there was stormwater and there is still screening problems that don't involve lights.
Just for clarification, I think, I'm not 100% sure, I think conservation was okay with the calculations. Again, I'm not 100% sure, Woody, on that. And I think at our last conservation meeting, it was more about site stabilization growth to make sure that there wouldn't be any issues on our stormwater and all that, that area. So it's gonna be a year to let that mature. So I think that's where that is. So the three things that we've touched upon in just a summary before I turn it over to you, Alicia, is, you know, the lighting, final site plan, and the screening component. So I think a lot of the comments that my board has made are right on cue. It's very difficult to determine screening because we don't have lighting, but we don't have a lighting plan. We haven't been able to achieve that, so it looks like that needs to come off the table. And then the final proposed plan without, as of August, it looks to be where we might be headed. So with that, Alicia, I'm gonna turn it over to your board.
Thank you, Pete.
Could I, this is Mike Laham with the Moore and Cameron Group. Could I step in or do you want me to wait until after this? I mean, I just feel like there's some clarification that needs to be made.
Well, Michael, okay, please, you know, because we're kind of in the boards are in the discussion phase, and we're kind of done with taking in comment. Please, if you think you have something that would be beneficial to help the boards understand the discussion now, please, please do supply that, sir. And just identify yourself in who you
Sure. My name is Mike Laham with the Moore and Cameron Group, civil engineer that's been working on this project. I think I can, I can understand and appreciate this has gone on for quite a while, so I think, especially doing this remotely and having to post, continue the last hearing, it's been quite a while. So I think there's a bit of confusion perhaps on what constitutes mitigation, what the goals were of the screening, and what we had presented now, geez, this would have been, right, this would have probably been five months ago, or that August hearing perhaps is when maybe we discussed this last, so it's been a while, but I can, if it would be helpful, and I'll try to be quick, I can share my screen and point out or and just identify the two plans that we're that we're working with. I don't know if that would be helpful for people, just before, I don't want to leave this meeting without everyone kind of being on the same page.
So you'd like to discuss the August 20th plan?
Well, I think it's more of the confusion of mitigation here, which, which is, which was represented on that, on the conditionally approved or provisionally approved plan is the
So Mike, I don't think that there's confusion on what's been done. What's been done, the board sees. It was different than what was approved, and again, these were shifting sands. And so what we're trying to do is, I know what was, what was that? What we need to do is what's here now and where we go forward. The site stabilization, I think, is from an engineering standpoint, from your perspective, is handled. And again, I don't want to speak of conservation, but that's conservation. The berms have been built, the grasses have been grown, are growing, the trees that have been planted are planted. And that's kind of where we're at right now. And I don't know if there's going to be more mitigation necessary based upon lighting, but we don't know what that is because we weren't able to get over that hurdle for four months. So I think from your perspective, we're okay. I don't, there's no question about what was done from your perspective, sir.
Well, there's been, there's been discussion the past 10 or 15 minutes about the lighting just being removed from, like, when you, when you're talking about lighting being kind of a separate item removed from the current discussion. Are you talking about just the Musco lighting? Are you talking about now the parking lot lighting? Because we don't have
I guess what I don't want to do now is I don't want to get into this discussion because the board is now in deliberations about all the stuff that we've heard. So if you had something to help us with this last piece, which was the final screening component, because we're now into the third, third part of this discussion, that's great. But if it's gonna go into the lighting discussion, I don't think I want to go there, Michael, if that's okay.
It, yeah, it's not really about, okay, I suppose, I think our position on the screening is that what was proposed on the mitigation plan, the revised, you know, the revised plan, the latest August 26th plan or whichever date that was, is a substitution for what was originally designed after the trees were cut down, right? There was a mitigation plan, there were trees and shrubs along the property line. We explained how we installed the berms and we also planted the 20 trees. So we've, we're of the position that the screening in place is as good as, if not better than what was approved. And now the question is, what will the lighting consultant say? And that's kind of what we're, where we are at this point. And I didn't sound like that's what everyone was talking about. There was talk about additional screening. We're of the position that we've put in the screening that is required based upon the approved mitigation plans prepared by Meridian Associates. And now we're waiting to have the lighting consultant confirm there's no light trespass over the property.
Okay, I got it. I appreciate that, Michael. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Alicia, over to you.
I'm gonna start with Jeff. Do you have any questions about the property line mitigation?
If you want to say just to the mitigation, I don't think the mitigation can be fully evaluated without working towards establishing a solution for the lighting.
But it's a lighting removed. Okay, do you think that there's been adequate mitigation from the
Mitigation for what? Darkness without the lights?
Well, there was a significant buffer. There was like a 20-foot buffer in that, along that, I guess it's the eastern side, that was cut beyond the limit of work.
No, no, I mean, buffering, what are we buffering for? Is it noise?
Well, that's a good, good question.
So I'm good, I'm good whatever the board wants to do. I'll go along with it. It's just
Okay, well, we're not talking about lighting. Okay, well, we're not talking about lights. We're just talking about.
Talk before the hospital is fine.
Okay, Mike?
I'm fine with the mitigation as what has been done.
And Jerry?
Yeah, I would I would agree with Mike.
I I I feel a little bit differently. I think I am not sure that there's adequate mitigation there even without the lighting because there was that huge space by the shed. And I'm not sure if, I mean, it's possible that there were some bushes planted on the other side that mitigated for that, but I don't know that. And I don't know, Martha, do we have a plan? I don't know if we have a plan that shows all the plantings that were done to date, do we?
Yeah, actually, there was a group of plantings that was done there next to the shed and those don't show up on the plan that we received, I don't think.
So it's possible that it's mitigated appropriately without lighting, but I don't I don't know that for sure. So that's my comments on that on that one.
Thank you, Alicia. Okay, back to planning board. So we've had our discussion. We've seen where we've been the past four months with trying to appease our our conditions and our superseding conditions. And I would entertain a motion at this point in time from anyone on my board.
What do you mean, Peter? A motion to the extent of wrapping up the hearings, close up the open hearings and on everything except lighting and then continue a separate new hearing on the lighting, finishing that up?
It is it's the will of this board to close this public hearing. I would entertain that motion. And then we could see what direction we need to go in from there, from our our town council and on what our options are.
And then do secondarily and going forward to finish up the lighting issue, we get everything else done. Otherwise, we're not going to finish.
Yeah, it would be the lighting would be would come back as a as a as another, you know, applicant application. So I I think what I'm trying to say is if if there's a motion at this point in time to close this public hearing so that we can put a conclusion to this aspect of of this project, I would enter that motion.
Mr. Chair, I do see a raised hand. I don't know if you want to entertain any public comment at this point.
Okay, a little out of order. So but let's have our public comment. Who do you see there?
I see Dale.
Okay. So Dale, if you want to identify and location in your address, please.
Sure, Dale Williams, 12 Scotland Heights Drive, Newbury. I tuned in tonight because it's advertised as a public hearing and we were about to close the meeting without any public hearing. So I have a few comments. Number one, if I had a Merriam-Webster dictionary that was audio video, this whole thing for the last three years would come under paralysis. And I'm hearing from the majority of the planning board and a few of the select board that they're ready to move on. They're ready to stop being an obstructionist. That's my first comment. Secondly, the mitigation on the east side of the property. A handful of trees were cut over there in the original problem area. 20 to 22 trees have been replaced in the planting. Number three, the new report Chamber of Commerce came up to the golf center to have a ribbon cutting service ceremony because of the importance they see in this to the development of commerce in the area. And here we have the town of Newbury, which I'm proud of, is just roadblock after roadblock after roadblock. I don't remember which meeting was it, where do we stand on mitigation, how's the stormwater? And it just goes on and on and on. My question is, do any of these boards care about business development in the town of Newbury? Or business development for the businesses that already exist? Or we continuously put roadblocks up? So no business is ever going to want to come here based on this experience of the last three years. And that's my comment. Thank you.
I think you asked a question and I'm going to take the liberty to answer the question. With regards to this board being obstructionary, and I'm not sure when you tuned into this meeting, but there was a historical perspective to indicate that the board allowed this entity to start business. We did not have to do that. We were trying to facilitate the process. We specifically did not have a hearing in November because I did not want to embarrass the applicant by saying, why don't we have a lighting consultant? So this board has worked very hard to try to facilitate this. Our town council has worked hard to try to find lighting consultants. So I a little bit I take I take a little bit of offense to indicate that the board has been obstruction. We have spent many, many, many hours trying to find a solution to the situation. And at this point in time, I think it's appropriate to say that our role of what we're doing needs to come to a crossroads. We had a superseding order. It was a condition. It was an agreement. It was a contract, if you will. One person said they were going to do one thing. Another person said they were going to do another thing. Here we are four months later. It hasn't been acknowledged or responded or respected. That puts that puts us in a very difficult situation. So that's all I think I'll say about that. I I do not. I do not want to get into a he said, she said, I'm not going to do that. You asked a question. I responded to your question. Thank you for your comment. Okay, I'm going to go back to the planning.
Peter, can I say? Can I say something?
I no, at this point in time, I think what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get direction from my board to tell us where we're going to go. We've had opportunity for you to speak for the for the for your team to speak, for the public to speak. Now it's time for the board to make a decision.
I can't give an option here. Give the board an idea.
I'll tell you what. Not at this point in time. Thanks. I'm sorry. Larry?
Pete, I mean, you've suggested a motion to close the public hearing, which is going to start a clock on when the decision has to be filed with the town clerk's office. And I'm coming back to my earlier question to Martha, are we in a position to issue such a decision? You know, or to formulate such a decision?
Well, I I think.
No, let me, Martha, could I suggest that I direct that to our council to ask us what our paths are available this time?
That's what I was going to suggest.
You saw me sit up, Mr. Chairman, because I was going to volunteer to do just that.
Thank you so much, sir.
It seems like an opportune time to kind of lay that out because I I see the the board is kind of stuck at that crossroad. So I mean, just stepping back to 50,000 feet here. I mean, in any given application, you have three fundamental options, deny, approve as proposed or approve as proposed with conditions. So the two ways that you can approve, I won't spend any time discussing a denial for for tonight's purposes. But if you approve the plan as presented, and by as presented, I mean the 82520 plan, that's it. You've you're accepting, you know, the the mitigation and what's shown on the plan and you can attach, you know, whatever appropriate safeguards you think to that. The second version is you approve it subject to additional conditions that certain features or mitigation or something be added to the plan for the board's review and approval subsequent to filing your decision. So the difficulty with either one of those is is what I sense the board is struggling with. So if you just approve the plan as presented on 825, without, you know, the peer review and without any certainty as to whether or not the plan actually shows what's what's on the site and whether or not that's sufficient. There's something missing in your in your process by just approving the plan shown on 825. But equally troublesome is approving the plan subject to conditions that you would draft to address, you know, whatever leftover concerns you may have, any outstanding issues. Because without the benefit of, you know, the the consultant that we had contemplated, the board may not feel that it's in a position to actually draft those conditions and know if they're effective conditions. So if, for example, you know, screening on the east side, you could, you know, impose a condition that additional be screening, you know, be be installed of such and such a height, such and such a species, such and such a location. But, you know, without the benefit of, you know, some of the information that's been lacking here, it's difficult to know if that works. So you you are somewhat, you know, between a rock and a hard place and with those two choices. So I understand why it's a difficult choice to make. But if the public hearing is closed, those are going to be the choices in front of the board. You know, deny, approve or approve with conditions and that each one of those presents certain difficulties. And obviously, each one has significant consequences for the ongoing operation. You know, not to not address the elephant in the room, but Newbury Golf Center is open and operating pursuant to this interim superseding order that the board, the boards plural saw fit to to allow. And one of the conditions of that was that a peer review consultant be engaged and and get a report by now. But also that the certificate of occupancy was was tied to that approval and the approval of all those conditions. So, you know, there are very real consequences for for what step the board takes next.
Thank you for the clarification on the last point. Brian, that's that's an important one.
Peter, can I ask a question? Or do you want me to wait?
Well, no, go ahead, Jeff. Alicia, you're okay, right?
Probably it was I I made a misconception and it's led to my kind of sticking with a lighting problem. Did Musco present a solution for zero light trespass on just the landing area? Or did they also do that for the troublesome lights in the parking lot?
Jeff, all that I can tell you is an email was sent and received by Martha, Alicia, myself, Mike, Jerry and Leslie. Those are the people who got this email on Sunday night. And so.
I got you. What I mean.
I have no idea. I really didn't.
If if that's the case that Musco, who somewhat professional, I imagine, in the field have done something about zero lighting on the site, not the landing area. Maybe that's what we should try to move forward in the next weeks and then have a meeting with a neighbor and see if there really is zero light trespass. But that's for us.
Well, Jeff, that's kind of where we what we've been asking of the applicant since.
I know that.
August.
Saying if that's the case, we should try to find that out and then move from that. Now, if Musco didn't do that and they did it just for the landing area, then my hypothesis is is not worth anything.
It this whole thing, excuse me, Pete, I just need to get this off my chest. Because the applicant hasn't provided the documentation that we've asked him to provide to us. It puts us in a very difficult spot. And it puts himself in a very difficult spot, whether he's aware of it or not. He is significantly at risk. And it it really eats at me. That's it.
I'm just looking at something here to see if I could answer Jeff's question, but I I can't because I don't know if I can read this correctly. So.
We could we could another time, but if if that's the case, maybe move in that direction, get get things moving. But another time, we have plenty of time. We don't have plenty of time, but.
Peter, may I offer a comment? I don't mean to interrupt anyone's train of thought.
Please go right ahead.
Had things occurred according to plan, we would have a peer review lighting consultant on this call who would have answered that question. And we would have a report and we would have the feedback that the board needs to make that decision. So that was the intention and it's been the intention for about 140 days. So, you know, we should know the answer to the question and we shouldn't have to ask the applicant. We should have funded peer review expert answering those kind of questions for us, someone whose duty of loyalty runs to us. That that was the intent.
That was the intention. That is why we continued this since November so that that could occur and that hasn't occurred.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
I don't know. I I just want the board to talk, Mike. I really do.
We agreed to the first consultant and offered to pay. He didn't show up.
So why didn't you go with the second or the third or the less expensive?
Triple the price.
So the first one was 3,000. The second one was 7,800. The third one didn't come back until after the last hearing. Brian went back to the first one. He agreed to come back, but jacked up his price 150% to 4,500. So at that point, Eric figured if I'm going to pay all this extra money, I might as well have Musco look at it and add the additional lights. We were prepared and Brian, Attorney Winner will tell you, we were prepared to pay the first consultant back in August and he didn't show.
So I just want to clarify. I do want to clarify because there were emails November 10th, November 14th, November 17th, the the 24th, December 3rd, the 5th, and they were they were all silent. There was no, yeah, we agree with you. Yes, we're going to go with this guy. Nothing for nothing, but $4,500. Throw 250 bucks a week at this, we would have been done with this. This would be, we wouldn't be here. We'd be done.
This this wasn't communicated with us at all. It was radio silence. And I I don't understand. I mean, put yourself in our spot. What what would you propose that we do?
No, I I don't want I don't I don't want to create. Discussion based upon what took place.
The chair's question.
And what has not occurred, what has not occurred is we don't have a consultant onboard mutually agreed upon by both boards. And we took four months to do that. And the last consultant was costing $4,500. The reason the first consultant was so high was because the first consultant did not have access to all the files and photometric analysis that he requested, which we requested from the applicant. And the applicant told us we would get it once we had a consultant in place. So excuse what bid is going to be.
The first consultant was three grand. We asked him to get in touch with us and we were going to send him the information. The second consultant came in at 7,800, not the first, the second. And we asked, was there anything we could do to help get that price down, including providing him all of the data? We asked those questions. So I agree that it's been four months, but the first two months were not the applicant's fault. The applicant agreed to pay and provide the data in August. So to to answer Madam Chair's question is, if your question is, what is it we can do now to get this done? I'll ask Eric on the spot in front of everybody, will you deliver a check for $4,500 tomorrow? And will you, like Barry from Musco, do whatever the consultant asks him to do and provide that information?
Yes, so wait, timeout, timeout. What we agreed to was to have an independent consultant that had no economic interest in this project, very important, no economic interest in this project to give us an an estimation and a professional opinion without economic interest to help these boards make a decision.
I am not suggesting.
Very important, especially if the consultant the consultant being asked is going to be selling the lights that are going to make.
No, Mr. Chairman, if I could, we're not asking that Mike Berry be the consultant. We're asking that Mike Berry provide the information that you have just suggested your consultant needs to have. So what I was suggesting is Eric show up with a check tomorrow for forty five hundred dollars. What I was suggesting is Eric instruct Mike Berry to cooperate with the town's consultant and provide the information that you just indicated we have not been previously willing to give. Which which I do need to correct. We were willing to give it. We just wanted to know who we were delivering it to.
Larry, I'm gonna I'm gonna turn to you for a couple of minutes here.
I'll be honest with you. I'm stunned. You got hundreds of thousands of dollars into this project and we've delayed it how many months over a few thousand bucks? I mean, come on. I I'm just I'm speechless. I don't know what to say. I had no idea what sort of money it was costing for this consultant, but we're talking. Peanuts. In in terms of the cost of this entire project, I don't know what what to say.
If if I may. Please. It it seems now at this juncture. You do have an independent without any interest consultant. Is that correct, Mr. Rosen, Attorney Rosen?
You would need to ask Attorney Winner.
Oh, okay. Attorney Winner.
I'm happy to answer that. On. As of November, I think seventeenth. He was willing and had provided an engagement letter. But since we never received funding, I haven't communicated with him since.
We don't know. So we don't.
I don't know.
We don't know.
But.
It would seem to me that if we don't know and we can't go forward and we need more information, why not continue this? And 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 for a very short period to make sure. You do have a consultant or notify us, let's say like. In in two weeks, whether or not you have this independent consultant. And then we can then, you know, let's give a date. Far enough out so that report on the lighting can come back so we can conclude this. I'm just trying to think of ways to solve our issues, our our un. Unknown issues and also at the same time. You know, go forward.
We're here, Jerry. I think everybody's in the in the same area of. Processing the discussion that's taking place. Trying to figure out what avenue is going to work best because we tried this apparent avenue. And we've been at this project. Trying to help it along the best we can.
I have a concern if if the boards. Decide to entertain. Again, moving this ahead. What plan are we going to be looking at? I have. Meeting notes here from the public hearing. Of August eighth, twenty seventeen, which is how far back this went. And I have notes here. Attorney Rosen agreeing to removing the fifty foot. Lights. And completely removing them and not bringing those back to the boards. Until a much later date, till this process was closed. And the plans I believe that the town has, and Martha, you can confirm this, have those lights removed. And I am not. Willing to entertain adding those lights on again. The way that the plans were. Submitted to us and it was just a preliminary cursor look at it. I don't know if they're there. But. I feel that. The lighting issue. As it currently is, we had agreed to a lighting plan. The town had agreed to it. The applicant took it upon himself to do something completely different without getting the board's approvals. And. He understood. That I have right here, a public hearing on June fifth, twenty eighteen. Attorney Michael Rosen said the board will have the ability to tell him that he cannot turn on the lights. And Eric Sorensen will have spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to install lights that he cannot use. And I am not going to entertain putting those big lights back on. I really feel as if we need to separate the lighting. I think Eric has a viable business. I think he has the potential to grow. But I think it needs to be dark for now and just operate during daylight hours. Until. Until and but we also need to deal with having. The other mitigation pieces to make sure that all of that is short shored up. We don't have to do that tonight. We can we can close this public hearing. And then come together at a later date. Go over everything that is missing. Make sure that his that we the town receives everything that we've been promised. And then Eric can continue his operations. That's the direction I would like to see it going. I don't know if it's too early for that. I shouldn't have said that, but that's what I'm thinking. I don't know how my board feels. Jerry?
Well, I mean, that's that seems like it. It may be. A possible solution since we're just sitting here twiddling our thumbs and looking at each other. Yeah, I mean, that that may work.
Mike?
I'm fine with going ahead with that. We gotta move this along. It's like we're going nowhere tonight.
And Jeff?
Where's Jeff?
Jeff, we can't hear you.
I've said lighting is the problem from the beginning, so obviously I'm okay with it.
If I understand that correctly, the select board is willing to then. Close this hearing. We the we come up with a series of conditions through. Council and town planner to bring back for discussion points. And then. The lighting issue will be taken up by the applicant at some other time. When there can be a different perspective on it. I think that's is that what I'm hearing from you, Alicia?
Yes.
Okay. With that said, Larry, what do you think of that?
Yeah, I mean, my my only concern once again is is the clock on once you close the public hearing. Getting the decision filed with the town clerk. I think it's a fine way forward.
Okay.
That would be my only reservation.
Okay, appreciate that, Larry. George? George, you're muted, my friend. I think you're still muted, George.
I think it's star six.
Is it star six, a star nine, Martha?
I think it's star six.
Star six. I'll come back to George in a sec. I'll come back to George in a sec. Leslie?
Isn't that the presentation that town council made as? There we had two choices and that was choice number two and. Both of them kind of. Had their downfalls. This to me is the lesser of the two evils and. I think going in that direction and with the conditions on it. Might be the best idea to move this thing forward.
Okay, thanks, Leslie. Woody?
Yeah, I say that we are closed the public hearing.
And George?
George, try star nine. See if that works.
I don't think he can hear us.
He's calling in. Give him a sec to clue and hold on just for a sec, folks.
Yeah, I think he may have lost the phone connection.
Connection, yeah, because he was on a phone.
Right.
Phone access.
Right.
Let me see. I don't know if I have that number handy in front of me.
I gave it to him earlier.
Okay. Give it a sec.
I'll text. Here he comes.
Okay, great. I think we're getting you back, George. George, do we have you back, my friend?
Hello?
Oh, we hear you.
Yes, George, we hear you. Okay, so you might need to take the phone a little bit closer so we can hear you from the microphone, sir.
No.
There we go. Got you, George. George, can you hear us?
I can hear you and I can. I think you can hear me now, right?
Beautiful. I love when technology gets back. Okay.
The battery died.
I got one of those today of iPhones. It was a significant fatal error message. So we were just polling as to whether we thought it might make sense to take lighting out of the equation, come up with conditions, drafting by Brian and by Martha.
Excellent. I agree.
All right, if that's the case, then I would entertain a motion to close a public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
There's a motion to on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? I'm just going to go around the tree. Larry, any any comments?
No discussion, no.
Okay, Leslie?
Nothing.
George?
None.
Great. Woody?
No.
Okay, then on the motion, how say you, Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Chairs in favor as well. Over to you, Alicia.
I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
And any discussion? Jerry?
No.
Mike?
I just wish we could get another two weeks to possibly get a consultant and get this thing done, but.
Yeah, Jeff? Any any discussion, Jeff? I think that's a no. Okay. So I'm going to do roll call vote. All in favor, Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
And Jeffrey Walker? Jeff, we can't hear you. Yes, okay. Alicia Greco, yes.
Okay, that being the case, Brian, I'm going to just have you just summarize so the boards have something to think about as to our direction paths at this point in time. You touched on it, but just help us again.
Sure, and just to lay it out in terms of the timeframe, so for. For a great deal of time, we were operating under. Some relief from the state legislature in terms of closing public hearings, drafting decisions. We no longer have the benefit of that, so we're back to the usual timelines. In terms of what happens after you close. A special permit and a site plan review public hearing. So under the special permit. You have ninety days to wrap up and file your decision after the fourteen days following, so. We have a, you know, three month plus two week, you know, window. Now, the public hearing is closed, so you don't have to continue to a date certain. You can put it on your agenda. As it fits in, I know both boards are very busy. It might be advantageous to. Continue to try to coordinate those dates so that the conversations are held jointly as we have been doing for some time now. The timeline is a little bit tighter on the planning board side. I think your rules and regs provide for a shorter period. For some reason, my recollection is twenty five days unless there's an agreement to extend. But we can verify on that. And in the meantime. I believe that Martha and I would benefit from some direction from the board in terms of preparing a draft with draft conditions for you to consider at your next meeting. And maybe maybe the time to get that direction would be at the next meeting. It's now approaching nine o'clock. I don't know if people have an appetite for having that conversation now, but. What will happen is the board will need to decide. What kind of decision it wants to see prepared? In approve the site plan and identify exactly which site plan we're talking about. So the most recent plan that's been considered is the August twenty fifth, two thousand twenty. Plan and it's entitled Modified Site Plan and Landscaping Plan. So that would be the basis of your decision, so you can review that plan and determine whether or not there are any conditions you want to attach to it. In terms of the actual features that are indicated on the plan. And also, you know, the interim. Permission, the superseding order that the boards voted. It contains restrictions on the lighting, contains restrictions on other aspects, so those are the things you're going to need to consider at the next step.
Does anyone have any questions that they want to pose to our attorney at this point in time? I want to just kind of look at my board members. Larry?
Well, we have in the past. Moved to request the town planner with the assistance of town council to draft the decision consistent with the board's deliberations. Is that would that give you enough direction, Brian, do you think?
I think it does. I think we're going to need some more assistance as as we go along through this process.
Well, I'm thinking of fairly short. Well, depending on your schedule, I'm thinking of. Fairly quick turnaround or short continuance, where we could have a draft that we could look at and then sort of refine the points that we need to make.
I my opinion, and I'm not going to speak for Martha, is that we could. Since, you know, you do have written decisions from two thousand seventeen. I think we could adapt those to provide a skeletal decision for you. And then we can highlight, you know, what's missing from it and where there are areas that the board will need to. Do some deliberations to decide where to plug in some additional conditions or other parameters, so I think we could provide a template. That would be a good. Launching point for the board to work from.
That's what I had in mind.
Yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't. I wouldn't want to attempt to try and list all the conditions tonight.
Yeah.
Great, Larry. George, any questions for Brian?
Right now, I appreciate his input, but no questions right now.
Thanks, George. Leslie?
No, no questions right now. Thank you, Brian.
Great, thanks, Les. Woody?
No, I do not have any questions at this time for Brian. Thank you.
Okay, so I think from the planning board's perspective, we have a template that we could probably. Go forward with. Now, I understand we have ninety days on one perspective and did you say twenty five days for the planning board perspective?
I believe that's what your rules and regulations require for site plan review submissions.
Okay, so Martha, I need. I need to just get some direction from you and your perspective as to. If we need to have this within twenty five days, what your thoughts are on that and our next follow up conversation and direction.
Well, it's really going to be, you know, joint effort with Brian, so. I don't know at this point.
And I know the plate is very full.
And I expect to take the lead and draft something for Martha to review.
Okay.
So I do expect to carry the laboring war on that. I know you're all very, very busy. And you have many matters to deal with, including another one tonight. So I expect to be able to provide that. That sort of specimen or template to Martha for her for her comment, so. Hopefully that'll. Move this along a little bit more efficiently.
So I'm open to suggestion for our. So I'm open to suggestion for our, our follow-up gathering.
I mean, in terms of a date?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think Brian made the point that we don't have to choose a date tonight.
We can.
Perhaps we can just get some feedback from them when they're, they're comfortable going forward.
Okay.
Is that reasonable? Or Brian, would you prefer to have a deadline? Sometimes deadlines help.
I, I feel that I already have a deadline.
All right.
So, and, and because the public hearing is closed, you know, you can just post an open meeting law compliant agenda, forty-eight hours notice. So I think we can move this along, and certainly it is not going to fall off my attention span.
No, I, I didn't think it would.
Yeah.
May, if I can suggest, maybe we ought to hold a special meeting for it.
Sure. Okay, thanks, Larry. Any other comment?
Devote as much time as necessary.
Yes, great. Any other comments from planning board members? George?
No.
Okay, Les?
No.
Okay, Woody?
No.
Okay, great. Alicia, I don't know if you have any questions or comments for your boards, board members?
Um, I do. I kind of, I'm going to ask that Martha, please, could you send along to the board, the four members of the board here tonight, the original special permit approval and the conditions that were approved along with the meeting date and the meeting minutes, if possible, so they can go back and they can watch where the thought was when the original special permit was granted? If you could do this, please, I know I don't want to add more to your plate, but maybe Julie could do that. And then the, the other thing is I would like the actual, we have specific criteria that we need to review, so if you could send that along as well. You know, take a screenshot of the, the bylaws or whatever. I think you've sent it, you have sent it up to us before. Yeah. So I just want, I just want the board to be aware. I mean, we've done, Jeff's done special permits. I don't know if Mike's done one. I think, I don't know if Jerry's done them in the past, but they're, they're different than site plan review. So I think better prepared we are for upcoming meeting, the quicker it'll, it'll go.
Okay. Great, then I think we are, we are set with this agenda item.
Well, one more question, one more time, sorry. Does anybody have any questions of Brian before we don't have him anymore? Jeff?
You'll still have me.
Really quick.
Just not tonight.
If we kind of go in this direction.
I'm sorry, I'm having a very hard time hearing you, Jeff.
I don't know what's going on.
Okay, maybe I can. Go ahead.
Probably not you, but if we're going in this direction, does that mean that site plan review could be okay, but it would be okay without lighting?
That's one of the things the board will have to consider, lighting off the table, sufficiency of mitigation, whether or not to approve the plan, you know, with any stipulations or conditions. And as I understood the discussion, lighting's off the table.
Yep, okay, just to make sure everyone realizes that.
You know, without the benefit of the peer review consultant, we're not in a position to really deliberate on the lighting.
Jerry, do you have any questions for, for Brian?
No, I, I guess my question is that the planning board, they voted on the motion to close. We haven't, we haven't, we haven't done any motion to close yet, is that correct?
No, we, we did, we closed. We had, we had a roll call vote. We closed the public hearing.
You did? Okay.
We did.
All right.
That's okay, that was me earlier, don't worry about it. Mike, how about you? Mike, do we have any questions for Brian?
Uh, I'm also, thanks, Brian.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you, thank you, Pete.
Okay, great. I think.
Evening, everyone.
Thank you very much. All right, thanks, Brian. Um, I think then we'll continue with our public hearing, our next public hearing. Is it continuance? It's a site plan review application for tree newbury port turnpike map R forty-seven lot thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Barrio Family Realty Two LLC to be held concurrently with the select board public water supply protection overlay district special permit application three newbury port turnpike. And JR, I'm going to go over to you.
I'd like to open the, I'd like to continue the public hearing for three newbury port turnpike. And I would entertain a motion.
Motion open? What are we looking for?
Motion. Okay, roll call vote. Jeff Walker?
Can I hear me?
No.
Faintly, but yes. Okay, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Okay, back to you, Pete.
All right, great. I, I invite the application engineer to present any information, new information, revisions or submissions that were last, from last week. I don't think, Martha, have we received any comments from our, our review engineer from last submission?
No, not yet.
Okay, so we need confirmation on those comments. Okay, great. Do we have anyone who'd like to address our boards?
Yeah, TJ Melvin with Millennium Engineering here on behalf of the applicant for the project located at three newbury port turnpike. So since the last joint meeting, we've made some minor revisions to the plans based off the planning board's peer reviewer. The majority of the changes were minor tweaks to the parking areas. Some, some details were modified to provide different design standards for the bio retention area. With me on the call tonight, I do have Timothy Snae from Ransom Consulting. I know there, both boards had many concerns about the hazardous materials on site. And he's here and willing to answer any questions the board may specifically have to that effect. So I, I can share my screen if you want to go through some of the changes, but it was, you know, minor aisle widening for the parking and it really was just specific details, construction details that were added or tweaked to the plan.
You might as well put those up, TJ, just so we can see what they were.
Right, I need to make you a co-host. Should be all set now.
Okay, thank you. The majority of the changes were in this area here. We initially had a twenty-two foot wide aisle for one-way traffic. We've since extended the, the pavement towards Newbury Port Turnpike to provide twenty-four foot turnout aisle. And similarly, in this area here, we've also increased this to twenty-four feet as well. There were some questions regarding the details of the soil media for the bio retention area that, that have been changed to meet the peer reviewers' comments. The Conservation Commission has requested that we revise the planting for the bio retention area. We've actually should be resubmitting that this week for the, for the Conservation Commission approval. And that really is the bulk of the changes that were made since the last, the time we had that.
Alicia, did your board have some specific questions with just, they have this like something that might be able to answer some of those components?
Um, I'm going to actually defer to Chairman Colby.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm sorry, Alicia. My brain is still.
Any questions or comments from the select board at this time?
You want to go through one at a time, name, name them, JR, roll call vote, like roll call?
Okay, that's good, because I'm on split screen with the map right now, so I can't see. We'll start with Jeff Walker. Any questions or comments?
Hear me?
Yes, faintly, but yes.
I, I'll try to make it as short then as I can. I looked at the solution statement. And working in the wetlands like I do all the time, I was curious to know if those solutions that are underneath the site, have they been broken down by microbial action or time or whatever? Because when you infuse a lot of water from the rain gardens, what's going to happen to them? Will they be able to make it into our water table? And I'm okay, I just need some sort of answer because reading some of the solution statements, I wasn't really getting a clear picture. So how, how vital are the, what's left in the site when you start to fill them up with water?
This is Tim Snae with Ransom Consulting. I can make, take a shot at trying to provide some information that may assuage some concerns. Again, I'm a licensed type professional that works for Ransom Consulting over in Byfield. I'm actually in Newbury, I mean, in the, your same building. Be that as it may, I took a look at the prior data that was developed by Arcadis back in two thousand seventeen, and then recently by Conoco engineers and environmental consultants in two thousand twenty. And for the most part, the areas of contamination, there are basically two kinds of contamination. One is petroleum hydrocarbons related to former underground storage tanks. And those are more in the area in the footprint of the, of the proposed building and to the, the west towards Newport Turnpike. The area to the east of the building was, as I recall, was pretty clean as far as the degree of soil contamination from petroleum or other contaminants like metals. In the south, southern or southeastern, most southwesternmost corner, there's an area of groundwater that has been impacted by chlorinated solvents. And those contaminant concentrations are, are, I mean, they're above the state standards for really for vapor intrusion issues, which are being addressed by the applicant as far as the construction design. But the concentrations are below the state standards for overall groundwater quality in the Commonwealth, meaning their groundwater three standards, which are meant to be protective of the ultimate discharge of groundwater, the surface water. And I think another mitigating factor here is that the site is underlaid by at least a thirty-foot thick layer of clay, silty clay. So there's like four to eight feet of granular soils across the site, which is probably fill. But below that is, is a clay material that I think is, uh, will help prevent migration of some of the contaminants that are present in groundwater. And then also further in terms of the concern about enhancing leaching of contaminants, I think by actually adding some pavement sections to areas of the site, that's going to prevent further infiltration of precipitation that, you know, will continue to sort of, will limit future leachability of the contaminants. And we've, you know, there has been leaching occurring because we're seeing contaminants in groundwater. But over time, those concentrations have been dropping. And now that the sources of contamination have been removed, I'd expect those concentrations to continue to drop, particularly for the petroleum contaminants, they have, they'll break down much more quickly than the chlorinated contaminants. Where the chlorinated contaminants are located is really in the southern, southwestern corner, not in the area outside that's going to be redeveloped significantly.
Thank you.
Okay, I will move to Alicia Greco. Any questions or comments?
Um, can you pass over me for now and get me at the end?
Okay, Jerry Heavy?
No, no comments at this time.
Mike Doyle?
No comments.
Okay, back to your board, Pete.
Great. Hey, TJ, could you get that image off the screen now?
Yeah.
Great, just so we can see each other. Our board members. Um. Martha, do you have any comments or concerns at this point?
Uh, not on this aspect.
Okay. Okay, um, it just, I just want to see if, what's been discussed thus far. Larry, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, Woody?
No.
Leslie?
No.
George? Don't see George right now. I don't have any questions or concerns at this point. One question, I'm sorry, the fellow who was just talking, your first name again?
Tim Snae.
Tim, Tim, so the, the clay, the clay layer, how deep is that?
Well, what I, as I looked at the prior investigation reports, what I'm seeing is that they define subsurface conditions at the site as primarily consisting of sands and gravels to forty-eight feet below grade, and they identify as likely fill, underlaid by a light gray brown clay to at least thirty feet below grade. And that was the deepest boring they advanced at the site, so they don't have any information at depths greater than thirty feet below grade. So it sounds like it's, you know, it's a twenty, twenty-two foot thick layer of clay, the underlays, this probably imported fill materials that were brought on to develop the site way back when.
Gotcha, so the, the first, the first four feet is basically considered clean?
I think, so looking at the soil data, the upper soil, the soils above the water table were pretty, were generally clean. And the water table is obviously very shallow here, you know, it's a couple of feet below grade at some spots. The deeper, where contaminants were identified in soil was below the water table, which they probably got there through contaminant transport and contaminated groundwater. You're, you're processing, I see.
I am, I'm trying to contaminated transport, but that, that doesn't sound good, a contaminated groundwater, that doesn't sound healthy either.
Well, they, well, again, the data that I've looked at goes back to like the early nineteen nineties for the soil, because there's been no, there's been no real soil sampling for some time now. Most of the focus has been on the groundwater and also on the sediments of the, the wetland. So, I mean, I, I can, I've certainly provided the information, I can provide the data regarding the, you know, contaminant concentrations in groundwater. But it's, it's pretty old data.
So, so we're considering a project, but we're, we're using that up in nineteen ninety?
I, the data I'm looking at for some of the, so some of the data that was in the upland portion where the, one of the concerns that came up was the where the forest mains are for the, the fire hydrants or water supply to the, to the building. And the data there with this, there were some borings and wells installed in those areas back in the, the, the late nineties. And they were sampled in two thousand one. And I, but I think those borings and wells have been, have been destroyed since that time. That's why there's no new data there. But the most recent round of sampling was done in, in May, two thousand twenty as an obligation under the temporary solution statement. And most of the wells that are still remaining are in the southwestern corner. And they've been focusing on some of the chlorinated VOCs data. Unfortunately, we're relying on older data, and there's some two thousand seventeen data we're relying on from Arcadis. But again, it's, it's, it's a little bit, the primary focus has been on groundwater in that southwestern corner. And then also on the distribution of some of the metals and sediments of the former, of the wetland area.
So can I ask a question?
You sure can.
Thank you. Um. The select board has to make a decision on whether or not this project will like, the ground is what it is now. Once the ground is moved, will any of these contaminants that you're talking about infiltrate any further and disturb the water supply?
I don't think so. I think disturbing the soils doesn't like release the contaminants from the soil, meaning the soil, the contaminants are absorbed to the organic carbon that's, is part of the soil matrix. So by moving them around, they're not necessarily going to be flushed off the soil. And it's really, it's a, it's a chemical process of absorption to the soil particles that allows them to, to be sort of flushed off this, off of the soil. So these contaminants aren't terribly water soluble, so they want to stick to organic carbon. So they aren't really going to like just fall off the soil and flow into the groundwater. Of course, over years and years and years, some component of it does. But that's going to attenuate with time and with, you know, groundwater movement and so on.
But it won't, it won't be caused by this project.
I don't think so. I, I think that if there, where there is some residual contamination in groundwater by, you know, by covering it with asphalt in a building, then that prevents some precipitation from possibly, you know, adding or over, you know, slowly allowing some leaching of contaminants from soil in the groundwater. But I don't see there being a big contribution just by disturbing the soils. And as I understand, there's a lot of filling going on here to raise grades or some portions in that if TJ could speak to that, I thought that some of the, the concern was if they're digging into soils that are below the water table, that's where we see the contamination. It appears that the soils above the water table are pretty clean.
How deep do you have to dig, Mr. Snae, for this project?
Asked TJ, what's the, what's, how's that look?
Awesome, but as you mentioned, in most of the site, we're actually proposing to fill to install the water and sewer connections, you know, roughly four to five feet. And I know, Tim, we had had some discussion with. And I know, Tim, we had had some discussion with Newbury Port DPS. Um, and I believe that we came up with that the, uh, the bottom of those pipes are, you know, roughly a foot above the contamination level, I believe. Um, I think it was about half a foot to a foot above the groundwater in the front of the building.
Now, I have a question about that, now that you mentioned Newbury Port DPS. Are they requiring you to encase their water mains to avoid contamination?
Uh, they haven't requested anything to this point. We've offered that we would encase both of our lines uh, in concrete, uh, but we still haven't heard any feedback from the third party review.
Okay, so you still, you haven't gotten that third party review yet?
Nope.
So is it a concern that if a pipe uh, fails, that it'll be, it'll end up sucking in some contaminated material into the pipe? That somehow gets into the water system? Is that the concern? Or is it a concern like somehow chemical diffusion of contaminants in soil and groundwater making their way through the piping and then getting into the water supply?
It's um, I believe the concern is twofold. It's concern for the infrastructure of um, municipal water and all for releasing those particles into our groundwater. Because this does lie in Newbury's groundwater protection overlay district.
Right.
One thing I will, I will agree with Mr. Snay on, just to add two cents to this. Um, I'm not a soil scientist, far from it, but I deal in soils every day in my occupation. Um, it's very true that contaminants in even normal soil amendments you'd use in your garden, they attach themselves to soil particles basically on a molecular level.
Right.
So adding impervious to the top of a, to, of this scenario is unusually, but if normally I'm against adding impervious to um, to, to new sites for many reasons, but this is a case where if those particles are locked in the soil, adding an impervious cover will only be helped to protect them from leaching into the groundwater. Uh, Jeff?
Listening to what's been said, my only concern was you're going to have the runoff from the roofs, the runoff from all the pavement, the runoff from everything go into biodetention gardens that's going down under the site. What does that do to the groundwater and the, you know, the, the volatile pieces of sand underneath when you start to put all the water from the site down underneath the site?
I mean, I'm not going to, so speaking from a non-engineering perspective, uh, so the, the rainwater and storm, stormwater is being directed to a bio retention base in which there's going to be, you know, that's going to manage some of the solids and some of the petroleum that may end up in it. Um, I don't, I mean, I don't envision that being exacerbating to groundwater conditions across the site as it stands now, since site's unpaved. Um, so I don't know if it's six or one half dozen or another, you still, you still have infiltration going on. But I think in the area that, that stormwater detention basin is being installed, there's an area where there's not a significant amount of contamination that could be mobilized. Uh, much of it was in other parts of the site. So I think that being in the, sort of behind the building, um, and that was an area that was, that the sediments in the area were, were heavily excavated uh, to deal with some of the metals contamination. So I think that area is probably going to be as good a spot as any to re-infiltrate uh, stormwater from moved drains. Uh.
That's, that's all I needed to know.
Okay.
And can you refresh my memory? Who, who's doing the third party review and when do you expect that? What are they reviewing?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't recall the name. It was a company out of Maine, actually.
Okay.
Not very familiar with them.
Close enough.
So it, it's part of the contract, uh, we, her, to have a video conference call by the 19th and a memo by the end of the month.
And what is a third party reviewing?
Uh, just comments from um, the Newbury Port DPS regarding the reason the, the pipes are installed as is. And um, Tim had actually prepared a letter, uh, actually two iterations of the letter in response to comments from uh, the water superintendent.
And you expect that when? The 26th, you said?
Uh, yeah, memo by the end of the month.
Chairman Colby, I don't know if you want to wait for, to review that before we vote on this.
What's the feeling of the select board?
It wouldn't be a bad idea. I mean, if it's, if it's an important, we only have a, a limited scope in this and that's our scope. So why not wait till the report comes in?
Any other comments from the board?
Well, it, excuse me, yes, uh, in inquiry more or less, this report, it's, it's um, will it include Newbury or is it just for Newbury Port, that, that part of the project?
Um, so it's specifically in relation to concerns with if the soil or uh, the contaminants could infiltrate into the water services. Um, it's not a full site review. It's, it's rather specific, I believe, to the, the utilities and potential of contamination into the water system.
Right.
I- i- into their pipes?
Yes.
And that's Newbury Port's pipes and their, their municipal water supply, not Newbury.
Correct.
And so that really doesn't have any bearing on us?
Correct.
I apologize. I'm actually trying to pull up exactly the scope right now.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, this may take me, I just have to try to dig through my emails on my phone. I don't have it up in front of me at the moment.
And may I inquire, um, this, this report uh, was necessary in order for you to get the, um, the right or the easement to hook into Newbury Port's water system? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, this is just to get uh, the, the DPS to sign off on the water connection.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I'd just like to find out what the scope of the work that they were doing is. That's it for me. If it doesn't pertain to us, then I, I don't see any need to wait.
Yeah, I don't know if um, you know, protection of the, protection of the uh, Newbury Port water pipes is necessarily under our purview in this decision.
No, I don't feel that way either, but I just wasn't quite sure what, if it had anything else to do with groundwater or just the pipes.
Okay.
Uh, sorry, I apologize. Uh, there is a, an item that the, they call out, uh, what, what is required for future disturbance of the site under the temporary solution statement. So there, there may be additional information to that aspect. But I don't, I don't believe they're evaluating the entire site. I know, uh, Newbury Port Planning Board hasn't really asked or requested any other information. This is really all just triggered by the DPS connection.
All right, just one, one thing to add to that point is that, um, because this, the, this release site has a temporary solution, any response actions or any construction that's going to disturb soils, regardless of where they may be on the property, um, is subject to uh, regulation under the Massachusetts Continuity Plan. Uh, therefore, in advance of work being done, the site under for construction of the new structure, utilities, et cetera, there'll be an obligation for a, a release abatement measure plan to be submitted to the Mass DEP. And then both the town of Newbury and the city of Newport will be notified of that filing. Um, and so therefore there'll be an LSP of uh, participating in construction as it pertains to, you know, earthwork to ensure that, that if new conditions are identified, there's someone there that can manage them. And to ensure that, you know, minimal soil disturbances, et cetera, et cetera, are, are taken into consideration during construction.
Oh, so there's a state level oversight?
That's correct. As, as, it's state level, yes, but the licensed type professionals are the ones that basically implement the state regulations. Yeah, so there'll be oversight during earthwork activities at the site as part of construction. It's, it's obligatory.
Yeah, and that's pertaining just to these contaminants. In other words, if the ground wasn't contaminated, they, they wouldn't be there.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna ask for a straw vote from the board on if they, if the members want to wait on this additional report or not. Um, I will start with Alicia Greco.
Well, I'd just like to find out what the scope of this report is. You think he's digging, digging it up? They must have a scope of work that they requested. Just want to confirm that.
Um, sorry, I can actually try to forward it. I don't know if it's the easiest to just plop it on the screen or if I can forward it to Martha to, to send to you. I'm, I'm not sure the easiest way to do it without reading the couple-page document.
Do we need a couple pages of information or just a paragraph that says the scope of work? Is it more than a paragraph?
Uh, mm, no.
TJ, is it possible for you to pop it up on the screen and focus in on that paragraph?
Yeah, uh, sorry, I just got to transfer it one minute.
You're still a co-host, so you should be able to do that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just got to, I'm working from home right now, so I just got to transfer it from one email to the other.
Hmm, as, as are we all.
Yeah, we're all dealing with that.
Martha, as he's doing that, do you see any public comment individuals?
Um, I'm not seeing any, any raised hands. We haven't received any written comments about this at all.
Okay, thank you.
And one question for um, uh, Chair Colby. Would it be helpful, uh, if it comes to it, if I pop the decision criteria up on the screen for the select board on their special permit?
I think that'd be great, um, just so everyone's clear on where the select would stands on the special permit in the Water Protection Overlay District.
Okay, there are two findings that you, you all need to make, so I can pull that up when you're, when you're ready.
Yeah, put it up while we.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, be with me for a second. Hopefully I can do this. So are you able to see that?
Yes.
Yeah, so fancy.
So, these are the findings that you need to make right here. So I'm happy to read them if you'd like.
I can read through them. I had, I had a good two hours off earlier. Um, a, a special permit shall be granted if the Board of Selectmen determines in conjunction with the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, the Board of Water Commission, and the Planning Board that the intent of this bylaw, as well as its specific criteria are met. The uh, select, the select board shall not grant a special, sorry, I get, things are moving around on the screen.
It's, it's, I moved it. It's right here. These are the two.
So it's item C, numbers one and two?
Right.
You know what, Martha, I'm going to take you up on reading it. I'm sorry, I get a split screen that's covering part of the document.
Okay.
I'm not technical enough to correct that.
No, I'm happy to. The Board of Selectmen may grant the required special permit only upon finding that the proposed use meets the following standards, those specified in 97-11C of this bylaw, and any regulations or guidelines adopted by the Board of Appeals. The proposed use must in no way during construction or thereafter adversely affect the existing or potential quality or quantity of water that is available on the Water Supply Protection District. And it must be designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. So those are the two findings.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Martha, I was able to grab that, uh, the proposal from the third party review. If you want me to throw that up?
Okay, sure, I'll, I'll stop sharing here. So you should be able to do that now.
All right, so these are the, I guess it's four different tasks, um, primarily uh, task one, I believe is the only one that the, the board may have, um, interested in. Uh, the other two are the other, the other three, I believe are specific to the water main concerns.
What is required to, for the future disturbance of soils, given that the site is listed as release site under a Mass DEP temporary solution statement? If there is a need for a future Mass DEP regulatory submittal, for example, addition of conditions relative to future use or a permanent solution statement prior to future occupancy?
I can answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Um, there's no requirement. So the only requirement uh, from a regular standpoint is to provide the Mass DEP with a release abatement measure plan outlining the planned construction process in terms of earthwork and disturbance of soils and, and the impacts to groundwater, like if you had to de-water, for example. Um, there's nothing uh, that is required in terms of um, occupancy of the site. Um, because I think right now, as I understand it, the, the design of the proposed building is one that is lower levels, basically parking, upper levels are occupied. Um, so therefore, um, there's no other need for future DP regulatory submittals other than the, the RAM plan we talk about. Um, because the, the temporary solution statement does allow certain uses of the property. So as long as those uses aren't going to be something that poses a significant risk of harm to future occupants, those, those uses can be accept, are acceptable. And typically, the, the licensed type professional, I mean, it's not clear to me, uh, at this point, who will be responsible for uh, preparing the release of baby measure plan for submission to DEP. Um, because the LSP of record is a gentleman named Alan Walker, who used to work for Ransom many, many years ago, and now works for Conoco. And so Conoco is doing the, the semi-annual groundwater sampling and reporting. Um, so it's unclear who will be preparing the RAM plan. Um, it doesn't have to be the LSP of record. It can be the LSP for the developer, whoever, you know, it does, it just needs to be an LSP. Um, so I don't, and, and I don't think that there's any other, um, there is a need for a future DP regulatory submittal, just as in the form of a RAM plan.
Okay.
If I may just call, um, clarify one thing, I think the parking that was underneath the building, and TJ, you can correct me on this, has been removed, so it's actually all closed underneath?
Yes, that's correct.
It's above, it's above, but it's above, uh, it's not, it's not occupied space, correct?
Uh, a portion of it will be like a retail space.
Any other questions from the select board?
I'm good.
Yeah, does this go to our ConCon?
It's already gone before them.
That's what I figured. And what did they have for a finding?
Um, Pete, you may be able to say better than I, but the only thing I'm aware of is that they wanted some different plantings in the bio retention area.
They will be coming back.
Okay.
Uh, okay, Pete. Any, uh, thanks, thanks, Jared. Any questions from, uh, plenty of members? Larry?
No.
George?
No.
Leslie? I think you're muted, Les. Leslie, you're still muted. Was that a no?
Keep turning itself up back on. Yes, it's a no.
Okay, great. Yes, it's a no. I like that. Uh, Woody? No, okay, great. Uh, I, the chair doesn't have any questions either. Um, okay, so our next steps, Martha, do, is it, would it be appropriate for the two boards to kind of do their own thing now and we can talk about, we need to talk about the select book and talk about what they need to talk about going for, uh, in the future?
Um, I would say yes, if there's no other uh, information that's really needed to be presented to both. be presented to both boards.
Okay. If that's the case, Jay, are you comfortable with that, tracking differently?
Yeah, I think that's fine from this point on. As long as no one in my board is in disagreement with that, I think our, in this is much different than planning boards.
Okay. Martha, you need a time date, uh, for continuance?
Well, um, yes, yeah, because there's a whole slew of things that the planning board needs to discuss, um, with respect to the project, uh, water supply issues. So I guess, if I may, I'll put a, a question back to Chairman Colby, whether, whether you all feel that you might, uh, be in a position to take a straw vote on the findings and, uh, you know, perhaps continue to a date certain, but give direction to, um, to have a decision drafted.
Okay, and just so everybody's clear, we need to, um, we need to leave public hearing open until a decision is drafted to decide on, is that correct, Martha?
Um, it's recommended to do that, just in case there's any information, any additional information needed from the applicant. Now, it's not absolutely required, and there's certainly not been a lot of public input on this, but it's, it's a good practice to do that.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the members of the select board, and I'll go through one by one, if they feel they need anymore, don't feel they need any more information, um, before our next meeting, or if they feel like, you know, tracking on our own is appropriate from this point on. I'll start with Alicia.
I'm comfortable tracking on our own.
Uh, Jeff Walker?
I'm, I'm good.
Uh, Mike Doyle?
I'm good, too.
Jerry?
Yeah, um, on our own is fine.
All right, that's where we're at, Peter.
Okay, great, great, great. So, Martha?
Yes.
Let's look at our calendar.
And that's the one thing I forgot to get ready, so. Let me see if I can find that.
Okay.
Bear with me for a second. Opening.
Okay.
Okay, so you can't see it at the moment.
We don't actually need to see it, as long as you can see it and just tell us, oh, or you can direct us. All right, so.
So, we're here on the 12th.
Yep. So, uh, just for the select boards, uh, understanding, these are the current projects that we have in our pipeline, some are upcoming applications and the others are current, uh, uh, applications. So, we're looking at the, potentially, is the 3rd a Wednesday?
Uh, yeah, the 3rd is a Wednesday, so that, uh, we've got the, uh, two Old Point Road public hearing opening that night.
Okay.
And that's the only thing that's scheduled.
You want to put this in there? Would that make sense? Do you, do you need any time to, uh, gather any information, or do we need to hear back from Joe?
Uh, we still need to hear back from Joe to, um, you know, see whether he feels that all of his comments have been appropriately addressed. So I think that would, uh, that would probably be a good timeframe.
Okay, great. I didn't, Jane, a motion to continue this, uh, to the 3rd of, uh, February 7th and 15th.
I'll also move.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, uh, any discussion, Larry?
Uh, no.
George, discussion?
Yes.
None, none, okay, uh, what a discussion? No, well, Leslie, discussion?
No.
On the motion, how do you say, Larry?
Yes.
Great, George?
No.
I couldn't understand the question, Peter.
Okay, uh, it's, it's on the motion to continue to this, uh, 3rd of February?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Great, Leslie?
Yes.
Great, she has a favor as well, thanks. Okay.
And, um, let's see, should we, Martha, should the select board pick a, a certain date tonight?
Um, yes, if you're gonna continue, you should do that. I guess my one question is, do you want to go over those two findings and take a kind of a straw, straw vote since of the board on those findings and give me direction to, uh, to write a decision, or do you want to have more discussion before you do that?
How's the board, how's the board feel? Is there more discussion necessary? Are we ready to move to a straw vote?
No, I think maybe we could discuss a little bit.
Okay.
And would you mind if we do that tonight, Martha?
It's entirely up to you.
JR, it's up, up to you.
No, go for it.
So can you throw those findings up again, Martha, do you mind?
No, I don't mind at all. So are you able to see those, are they big enough?
Yeah.
Here, right here.
So we have to determine whether in no way during construction or thereafter adversely affect the existing or potential quality or quantity of water that is available in the water supply protection district. I think we heard tonight that, um, contaminants are well below that, in that encapsulating the project, the ground, for lack of a better word, would be good to protect it. So I think we've met that criteria. That's my opinion. How does the rest of the board feel on that?
I'm in agreement with that. Uh, Mike Doyle?
Hold on, I'm fine.
Okay, um, Jeff Walker?
I'm fine.
Jerry Heavy?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm just, could, um, refresh my recollection, uh, someone asked how, how deep they had a dig in this project? What was the answer?
Uh, roughly about three to five feet for, to install the utility.
Okay, yeah, yeah, um, and, yeah, and I'm, I'm fine, because they did say that, um, below the fill, there's the clay layer, which clay will, will cap or, uh, is pretty impervious to leaching, so I'm, I'm good with, uh, that during the construction.
TJ?
Yeah.
The fact of digging, though, I mean, is that a foundation? Are you gonna be driving pylons? Or, I mean, that's a pretty big building, you're only gonna go five, four or five feet down?
Uh, so, as of now, uh, we have not got a geotechno, geotechnical engineer involved. My guess is they're gonna have to do some sort of piling.
Yeah, so I wanted Jerry to realize, they'll probably be going down 20 feet.
Okay.
But yeah, as far as, you know, open activation and moving of soil, it is really mostly for the utilities. Yep.
But so pile driving is a little different than moving the soil. I'm sorry, Jerry, I didn't mean to jump over you.
That's okay, um, but even if you go 20 feet for the pilings, it, um, you still have another 10 feet before you even get to the clay, is that correct?
I know, that would be into the clay.
Clay is, clay would be the refusal for the pylons.
What do you mean by that, Jeff?
That's where the pilot is gonna hit something stable, probably.
Oh.
It'll be the clay, okay.
Can I chime in for a second on that matter?
Well, wait a minute, I, I want you to, but I have another question you can answer, too. So will, are the contaminants below that, that clay level, that 20 feet?
Not that I understand, no.
Are they above it?
Yeah, so I think that the water table is pretty shallow, um, so that's where the contaminants have been identified, is in the shallower groundwater. And if they're deeper, they, they, if they're deeper, they pose less of a risk, because they're deeper, they're further from a place where they could be, they could volatilize and make their way into a space or what have you.
Okay.
And I think the issue with the, the, that TJ was talking about is because there, there are clay soils, they tend to be compressive, so if they're gonna be putting a building on it, they'll be, they'll want to understand just what kind of load that clay can, uh, sustain, and they're, therefore develop, what'd be piers, piles, what have you, to support the structure.
So you think it'll be okay, pile driving 20 feet down, it won't, it won't affect the water?
I don't think so, no. I think we have to remember that the water has already been affected, um, so we're not making it any worse through this, this construction process, and by, again, by adding some of this impervious pavement, you know, facilitating, you know, preventing water from flowing into some areas where there may be contaminated groundwater present.
Okay, you've convinced me, thank you.
Okay.
You okay with that, Jerry?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so the next one is, we has to be designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. Do we agree with that? That's a planning board question.
Not much natural stuff right there.
I'm in agreement. Thoughts from the board?
I'm fine.
Alicia?
I think so.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Jerry?
Yeah, I think so, but the very, the very nature of, of the fact that you're building something means that you're disturbing the natural characteristics of the site.
Yeah, but you got to remember, this was a, uh, what kind of a site was it, circle finished?
It was all filled to begin with.
It was a factory site.
It was a factory, yeah.
Yeah, they did electroplating.
It's not pristine, it's not a pristine site.
That's the understatement of the day.
It was a superfund, I think.
It was.
Well, even that, a superfund, that, well, I guess I'm, 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 the na, what, how do you define natural? I, I, I'm being too much of an inter, of a lawyer. I'll pass.
Oh, yeah.
I think we're okay.
Yeah, there will be soil disturbance at the site, it's unavoidable, it's.
But it won't be substantial. They're not gonna make, make a mess of things and not, and not fix it.
Well, I, it won't, from the sounds of it, it won't be like the hole we saw dug by the, uh, train station.
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, consider that a straw vote. And, um, so Martha, I'm gonna go back to you, if, if we include this on our next agenda, that would obviously be too soon. I mean, we, we pretty much need to wait for the planning board to work before we circle back to a final decision, correct?
Well, I think, um, and since the, the considerations are so different, I don't know that you necessarily need to wait for the planning board to, um, to render their decision, I'm just looking at the calendar here, so your next, um, so your meeting is the 26th?
Yes.
So, um, yeah, it might be maybe beneficial to continue to the February 9th meeting, by then, if there are any final considerations from the CONSCOM, um, you know, that information should be available.
Okay, I entertain a motion from my board.
Move to continue this public hearing till February 9th at 7:15, is that?
That's usually a public hearing start time, and they'll be first in line this time, we won't do any of this.
I'll second, I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes, all right. Back to you, Chairman Pecos.
Great, well, thanks, JR. Uh, I would entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn for the, Martha, you okay with that?
I'm, I'm good with that, I guess.
Okay, no more business, okay, great, I, so a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
Thank you, Larry, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, now, there must be discussion on this, so let's just see if there's discussion, Larry?
No, I have.
No, no discussion, Woody? No discussion, Woody? No, all right, George, any discussion?
Yeah, good evening.
We're not there yet, Leslie, no discussion, okay. On, on the motion, how say you, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, Woody?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
Thank you, I think I'm okay with it, too. Very good. It, it's been wonderful, uh, meeting with you guys tonight, thanks very much, sorry it was such a long, uh, long session.
No problem, uh, have a great night, planning board members. Good night, everyone.
Night, night, everyone. Good night.
Thanks, Martha.
Thank you all.
All right, so you guys need to adjourn as well.
Yeah, I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker? And JR Colby, yes. Have a great night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Bye.